We said.
No, no, you can wait. We'll send them to add now.
We're all set. So I'll call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting order. First item is roll call. Elsa, Michael Kane, Susa, Steve, Kevin.
Here.
So we have it. We have a core. First item of business is public hearings. Now, would you read the? Public, the first public hearing.
Yeah, I got it too.
Thank you. Special permit twenty four zero zero two.
Reverse order here.
Oops, there on reversed order.
Yes.
Oh, go down. Yeah, let's follow the agenda.
Right. Notice this hereby given that the following public hearing will be held on March twenty six, twenty twenty four at seven P M. And Community Room Two Town Hall Annex One Three Four Groton Long Point Road and virtually via the Zoom platform to hear the following. Zoning Regulation Amendment R E G eight two four dash zero 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 one zoning regulation text amendment to see sections eight point five dash three point C. Outdoor recreation and activity areas. Eight point five dash three point D. Public outdoor recreation and activity, activity areas and eight point five dash three point E light poles. Chad Frost applicant, a Zoom meeting link will be posted to the town's website meetings calendar. Applications are on file and available for public inspection during normal business hours at the Planning Department, one, three, four, Groton, Long Point Road, Groton, Connecticut. Dated this fifteenth day of March, twenty twenty four at Groton, Connecticut.
Just a brief summary on the process for the public hearings. Eleven, the applicant make a presentation. Followed by town staff and then open it up to anybody in the public that wishes to address. The commission and then opening up to the commissioners for their comments or questions. And. We have to repeat that cycle if there. More information has to be gathered because if once we close a public hearing, we cannot receive any additional information. Before, before we address the. The request of a public hearing or subject of a public. So open it up to the. Outdoor recreation lighting amendment of the applicant make their public presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Chad Frost with Kent Frost Landscape Architecture here on behalf of. All right, we're just having some. No, that's okay. I'll give you time.
Now it's on, right? Yeah, and this is going. Okay. Yeah, we're just no hearing from staff member who's remote that she's not hearing anything. I'm not touching any windows.
It's all showing up.
You want to test it quickly?
Yeah, let's just test.
Give us one second. Testing, testing.
Yeah, you can hear it. Hope we see it.
Um, just.
Yeah.
Yeah, I heard it. All right. All right, so you should speak into the microphone. And just pull it out of the stand. Yeah.
All right, I'll start over then. Good evening. Chad Frost with Kent Frost Landscape Architecture here on behalf of the Park and Rec Department. But really also the town as a whole. And so this is, as was noted, a zone regulation change pertaining to the outdoor recreation activities. We were here getting a special permit from you for the middle school lights for the athletic fields several months ago. And at that point is when we realized there's that conflict within the regulations. Part of your charge to us as giving that. Exemption, if you will, was to do a rewrite of the regulations and come back. So we don't have to do that every single time. And there are two projects coming up that Park and Rec. Is currently working on right now that will, this will apply to. So that's why we're trying to. Get this in and through the process in order to help those two projects as they come through. So it is pretty simple, I guess, from my perspective. It is section eight point five dash three point C. It is specific for outdoor recreation lighting. And flipping right to the page that has the red and the black text. What you'll see is that in the original. Eight point five, three point C, which was. Written for outdoor recreation activity areas. We did specify some things, change a few words, remove some of the descriptions, added in designed to meet the specific needs of the recreational activity. As opposed to just being downward only. Still left in all the full cutoff requirements. We've added in the new regulation, this ANSI I E S R P dash six dash twenty two. Which is kind of a international guideline for lighting, both interior and exterior as the code. So that instead of the town having to specify every single thing and worry about every time a lighting thing changes to update your regulations, you can just reference in an international standard. And then we did put in there something for powering off the field lighting seventy five percent after one hour and completely off within two hours after a conclusion. So that was the original regulation. We've then added a point D, which is for public outdoor recreation activity areas. So we've, we've now separated just general outdoor activities, recreation activities, and then public outdoor recreation activities. And that really pertains to sports fields, right? All of which basically the same things that we included in the original point C were included in point D. With the exception that there are horizontal, so number three. Horizontal and upward facing lighting shall be only allowed when required by specific recreational use as defined by that. I E S R P six dash twenty two. Lighting for sports and recreational activities as required and as amended. And then down below in eight point five dash three, which is now going to be the E. The height exception. Before you had height exceptions for streetlights in the public right of ways, and we now have added the public outdoor recreation lighting, as we talked about when we were here for that variance. Cannot light athletic fields from a twenty foot pole. It needs to be higher in order to do that and meet all the requirements. And so that's when we added the, the public section and we included the regulation in the description above it. So that's my really short summary. Any questions?
Open up the staffer in a presentation.
All right. Thank you. So in terms of for the public hearing, the required referrals have all been sent out. The legal notice says noted has been posted. And as Sir Frost was saying, that, that this was basically stemming back from an ask from the commission asking to come back with some more. Guidance in terms of recreational lighting standards. So this, as Chad had mentioned, amend several sections. It clarifies the specific needs and requirements of the recreational activity. It creates a new section for specifically for public outdoor recreational and activity areas that is actually already defined within our regulations. And it increases the height of the light poles for public recreation. We received two communications from this. One was from the Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments. They have reviewed. This, these proposed amendments and determined that it will not have a negative inter municipal impact. Additionally, the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection has found that this application is consistent with the Connecticut Coastal Management Act. And finally, the proposed text amendments are consistent with the P O C D specifically. The high priority, high priority need for municipal facilities and associated improvements as well as providing standards for recreational requirements. And that's what I have so far.
Well, does anyone in the public? Wish to address us tonight on this issue? It's quiet. So open up to the commissioners, further comments or concerns. So I'll start with you, Hal.
Okay, I have a technical kind of question, but. You know, you talk about. Fully shielded as opposed to full cutoff. Now, I think the lighting that you have out there right now, which is wonderful. I believe there's upward, upward light there, and I believe that's actually an upside down, full cutoff light.
Correct.
As opposed to a fully shielded, which can have unlimited horizontal light. Is there any need ever of having pure horizontal light? Because that's seems to be the enemy of all. He wants to go up so you can see a ball or it seems to go down and they both need to be covered. Seems like we want to ban. Horizontal light.
So in the I E S basically covers that is my, my first quick answer because it will tell. You and also the lighting designers exactly where the light needs to go and how it's aimed. Most situations, there is never a light that's truly horizontal. It's really, it's, it's up if you need it for the underside of a ball so that you can see the pop fly and it's from above and downward. And to me, it gets into a little bit of semantics. The reason we left it in there with horizontal was because. A future group that might not have your understanding of lighting might look at a light that is facing upwards and consider some of that light coming out of it horizontal. Or even a light that's fully shielded and aimed down, that there's some horizontal light coming out of it, even though it's maybe not perpendicular to the, the pole itself. So that's why we left it.
Term full, I just said a double check.
Yep.
Back of my head was there and fully shielded actually allows, doesn't have any uplight. Or turn upside down, no down light.
Correct.
But it allows a hundred percent pure horizontal, which we seem, we have no need. I don't think we'd ever have a need of. Pure horizontal. You're going to go up or you're going to go down.
Yeah, I, I mean.
Seems like full, the term full cutoff. Whether it's inverse or otherwise would still apply, not allow someone to say, hey.
It would.
Shield, shielded, and that's not the right term, I don't think.
It, sure. Yes, I mean, I could see that. I'm, I'm trying to think of a couple other, you know, the, the two that'll be coming before you soon is Sutton Park. With the skate park lighting and so that's being lit from above. Again, there's nothing. There's some of it's going out and down, but definitely not horizontal.
Never horizontal.
Yeah, to avoid all the glare. So I, I could see it either way. It's, it's semantics. And if you're happier with one way than the other.
It's a technical thing that I just kind of looked up and it popped right up.
Yeah.
It's, it seems like the right term, having been caught with those terms once before. I, I can't be taught and I've once specified fully shielded and we were surprised. Badly because fully shielded means you can have horizontal light.
Yeah, well, and that was the language.
Restrictions on it.
Yeah, that was the language that was in this regulation. So we, we left that and continued it on, I guess. But if you'd like to change it. I don't think it has any adverse impact to the regulation change we're looking at.
I, I would suggest changing it, having had a bad experience with. A fully shielded light once. With some malicious compliance on it provided.
So full cutoff?
Full cutoff, yeah. Just put some restrictions on the horizontal.
Yeah, so it does say, I mean. That same one, the lighting is a full cutoff or I E S. And a cutoff fixture has approved or fully shielded.
That's my problem.
So you want to get rid of the or fully shielded and recess.
It only, it only gives an opening where we don't.
Okay, we don't need it.
Right.
So we can basically at the end of that comma, get rid of or fully shielded slash recessed, just end it with that.
Right.
As approved by the commission. And we would change that in two on the eight point five, three C. And we would change it on two and the new point D as well. Yeah.
Excellent. Mike, oh, I just, it seems fine to me. Just the number five and the number four where you talk about. The conclusion of each game.
Yeah.
Some of these things aren't games, right? It could be, so like the hours of operation of the skateboard park, right? So it would be, I, I don't, I just think maybe it should be activity or, or we use that word. Activity areas or something, maybe a different word than game.
We could, we could say event and or game. I, I think where that language stemmed from was new regulations that were coming out from the state that were. Really game specific, so that at the end of a game, you would.
Yeah, I think.
Get people out of there and not leave lights on all night.
Parks and Rec probably could use it for other events, right?
Right, but there's, there's same thing you want to, I would, the skate park as an example, right? When the lights go off, lights go off. There's not going to be like a. A timer, you're down, you know, every day is not an event.
Well, the game could also be suspended to. True, until the next day and you don't want to use that.
Yep.
But this, this allows for the intensity to go way down.
Yeah, correct.
Again, because you just don't need.
No, no, but it may not be the end of the game that you want that to apply.
That's true.
So would you?
If you suspend the game and continue it the next day, you want to have that event at that night.
Oh.
Follow the, the end of the game rules.
So should we, should we put in behind on each of those four on the, on the C and five on the D? At the conclusion of each game slash event and or.
I mean, that's fine by me. Yeah.
Yeah.
Should be included in there.
Okay.
That's all. Thank you.
So.
I guess a question about that, and I agree with Hal's point, first one. But for a skate park, how does that work? How, would that be, it's not a game.
It's not a game, it's not an event. It would, that's just going to be regulated lighting, right? So it'll go off at the time and it'll, it won't be. Pursuant to. Cutting down to seventy five percent for an hour and then it'll basically be just like a basketball court. When the courts are closed, the lights go off.
But there's no mention of that in the regulations.
No, again, that comes from a very specific, if you're holding a game and or an event, or there's something where you want spectators to leave. You don't want the lights to be shut off the minute the game ends and people can't leave safely. But likewise, you don't want the lights left on for five hours and have a big party after a game.
I don't understand. It seems like you have a third category there.
Well, I think.
I'm trying to think.
That's what you, you call.
I know we have a ice skating rink. Well, the entrance to Groton Long Point, you could argue that has a certain time, the lights go off or the timer goes off. But I was wondering what other sports there might be. I don't know disc office, that's even lit anywhere or, I mean, Mark is an expert on these things.
Yeah. Well, there's a number of options, sir. Even early, but right now, the two projects that are focused on are the pickleball events and Sun Park. And both of those would be. Test. Chad described, you know, lights go off at a certain time. This might. Pickleball phases down to fifty or seventy five percent fifty.
Yeah.
I wouldn't see us lighting up the disc office.
I just care.
A little on the back frisbees.
Yeah.
Bit of bats. Well, I don't know. I don't think it really answers them. I mean, telling you what you're supposed to do.
Well, and I, I think it applies in my mind at that. If the lighting is meant to be general lighting, if it's on every day, then it falls under the normal operations. And when you're in for the site plan and we have the.
Like streetlights.
Just like streetlights, just like the parking lot lights. It's just, it gets operated the same way. For this, it's more of if there's a, a field and an event space. And that's why game was used as opposed to something else, but we can, we can easily call it game and or event because there could be times when the marching band is having an event. And the lights are needed for that, so.
Right. So I guess, Staff, are you okay with that when the site plan comes in?
Yeah.
We can include that, yeah.
All right, thanks a lot. That's all I am.
Steve. Maybe it's engineers to come up with. The technical question. When you say power is, power will be reduced, is that, are you intending to dim the things or just cut off three quarters of the lights? What is, what is the goal?
Uh. I would say the goal is to reduce the light output by that seventy five percent.
Yeah, so I, I don't envision these things have big dimmers on them that you can. Or do they?
Uh, they do. No, yeah, even the ones that are out there right now, we can, we can change with the, an app on your phone.
Awesome.
So. Almost whatever you want. So, yeah, they are, they are dimmable.
Sort of dimmable to.
Yes, okay, that's the only question I had. Thank you. Yep.
Helen. I just had a question on how, so how, you, you, you weren't talking an angle on the horizontal. You just wanted. That the shielding is removed?
The term shielding.
Yeah.
Means something different than full cutoff in the industry.
Right.
Shielding has no requi, no requirements for diminishing horizontal light. It just calls for diminishing, for removing upward light or in this case downward lights.
Yeah. So what's the definition? Is it a ninety degree? I mean, you're not concerned about the degree of horizontal, right? You were just.
Well, I kind of am, but the way the, the term full cutoff.
Yeah.
Is already defined as tremendously limiting. How much light goes in the horizontal down to eighty and how much goes from eighty down to seventy? And then isn't restricted below that. It has those other restrictions which aren't that great, but they're all we got.
No, I get it.
And I would agree. I mean, I think shielding is a. Out of date term at this point, right? It was before we had the ability to really aim lights and the bulb was hanging lower than the fixture. And you would just put a piece of metal as a shield to keep it from going the way you don't want it to go. And now a full cutoff, the, the light sources. Up inside the housing so that all of the light is hidden within that shroud and everything is coming. Out directionally from the light.
Yes, so we approved the middle school. How, how tall were those towers?
Seventy feet.
That's great. So you have no bending in it. Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair of Northwest.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. What's the difference between public outdoor recreation and outdoor recreation?
Well, we, we. It was a question that we had as we talked about it with staff and the reason that we created a, a public outdoor recreation is that, first of all, public outdoor recreation was already defined. In your regulations as a thing. And the more we talked about. Allowing this to happen, right? It's really intended for public municipal. Of places, right? Fields, parks, things like that. And there was some concern that if this was. All rolled into just the outdoor recreation activity areas that a private individual that might want to put a volleyball court in their backyard. Could come in under that regulation and put up a seventy foot tall pole in their backyard. And that's somewhat allowed, right? And so that was, that's why we broke it out and said, public outdoor recreation. So this, it's a municipally owned or municipally controlled property that this is allowed.
So if you want. Paragraph. Five, three, C, three is the same thing you have in five, three, D. So what's the difference? I, I don't know why you need two different paragraphs. Why not just have one?
Well, it's. It's separated out so that basically, yes, all of the requirements between C and D are effectively the same with the addition of. One. And then the reason it's separated out is so that down below in the, in the height. And the exceptions to the height, we can say the public outdoor recreation lighting is what's allowed to exceed the twenty foot height. For, for anybody that's not a municipality that's applying for outdoor recreation lighting, they still can, but they cannot exceed that twenty foot height.
Yeah, but.
So that's the, that's the reason that there's a separation or a duplication of having.
Well, isn't it obvious if it's public or not public?
It is, and that's why we separated them into two.
Just the fact that you're going to light a field or a space doesn't, isn't there's. An obvious distinction between public and non-public?
Yes, but what we were trying to.
Well, it says in here public, so. In your, in your requirement. It, it looks like the requirements are the same.
They are.
Yeah.
The, meaning between C and D?
Yes.
Yes.
So if they're the same, why do you need two paragraphs? Why not just put it all into three, eight, three, C?
Well, we started with that. And then the reason we broke it out and created one specific just for public was again, so that. Because otherwise, if it's all into C and there's no word public outdoor recreation there, it's only outdoor recreation activity areas that encompasses.
But the light pole height. In current, current D.
Correct.
Says you want it and public outdoor recreation.
And public recreation isn't a defined term unless we create it under the new three D. I agree, it feels very. Duplicative, but we did, we had a lot of round discussions about that and ended up agreeing that this was the clearest way to make it. Defensible for you in the future, to make sure that. A private residential property or a private commercial property didn't come in and. Say try to light their parking lot and put. Stripes in their parking lot that make it look like a basketball court and put seventy foot tall poles in it when you only want twenty foot tall poles.
But. You're still stating that the lighting has to meet the. A N S I spec.
Yep.
For regular outdoor. Recreation activity area.
Correct. The only difference is the height.
What does that spec say?
Well, I could pull it out. It's, it's a very long lengthy spec. It's a couple hundred pages of, of all of the lighting.
What does it?
It does not specify just for public use. It could be for anything.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, but does it have all height in there?
Yes.
It does.
Yes.
What's the height?
It varies based on the sport and the use. And it's everything. I mean, it has velodrome. Lighting designs in there. It has, you know, for soccer and lacrosse, and it has for B M X tracks and it has even for like. Race car drag strips and it's every, you know, kind of lighting regulation. For each different kind of use. So that's why we use that as the reference so that you can always reference the most latest standard instead of trying to write a very specific one just for Groton that you'd have to adjust every time. A new lighting technology comes around.
Well, I'm concerned. That we have no idea what, what it is. What's the impact on adjacent properties? Well, the, on the sport, I mean, does that?
It, that's in there to what the full cutoff requirement needs to be at the edge of the field, what the lighting requirement needs to be.
Yeah, but are we, should we be concerned with that for effects on adjacent properties?
I would say yes. You know, and but that, I would also say that that regulation requires that at this point as well.
Yeah, but when we got an application or somebody comes in and wants to put the lights up.
Yep.
How do we know that they?
Well, it's.
That we can allow that? Do we have to have a special permit for it?
In this application, no, you would not. You would just have, as long as it meets the requirements. Right? If, if it comes in.
The, the spec is there for the field. Correct?
Correct.
And for the use.
Correct.
But not for, has, doesn't care about the adjacent property.
No, it, it does. I mean, that's all part of that regulation. It gives the, the requirements for how quickly the light needs to cut off at the edge of the playing surface or the event space. Or whatever, that's, that is in those requirements. But again, it just, it felt like instead of trying to define every single conceivable outdoor. Activity that could be permitted under this, it's just like a, a building code, right? You don't specify every single building code in your regulations. You reference. Other building codes and other. That's, that's the same thing we're trying to do here is reference.
We have setbacks on the property or.
Yep.
Or, or something like that in, in our regulations. So it's can be a concern and I'm, I would like to understand that what we're doing here, if we accept this. Doesn't create a problem.
Well, and the rest of your lighting, I, I would agree, the rest of your lighting requirements still all apply, right? So all the other, this is. Just allowing for outdoor recreation lighting to occur. It doesn't supersede, you know, your regulation that says you can't have light trespass.
Right, and we would still require a photometric plan.
No, but both for. Outdoor recreation and activity areas, you're spec, putting a spec in here. And. We've got to make sure that, that spec isn't going to get us into trouble. Or do we need a special permit for it? For these to make sure that we don't have some oddball case. And. Do we have to worry about? What the field is used for by the type of sport and what level it is, whether it's collegiate or.
Absolutely.
School or junior high school.
That's all part of that. That's specific.
What do we do for? The, the baseball that we have that's. In the summertime on the Fitch Field.
So that, so they're.
Not a collegiate thing, is it? How do you rate that?
Well, there, within that I E S specification, there's three tiers of lighting that goes from high school to top tier collegiate. Yeah. And when you are doing the lighting design, you have to decide what level you're at.
But who makes that decision? Do we have to be concerned with that? Or we aren't going to light the, the field across the street here. Or we aren't gonna light the, the field across the street here to collegiate level?
We did not, right? When we came in before you.
Yeah. But somebody else ten years from now.
Yep.
Are they gonna get us into trouble? That's.
So my feeling, and again, this is my, I would say my feeling on is that this allows you as a commission, the flexibility to always stay current with the most current requirements. If you were to take these requirements out of the I E S and, and try to write them very specific, then it, it becomes.
Well, I don't have a problem with referencing the spec, but
Okay.
You gotta understand, do we need extra controls over that? And where we, where we use it? Other than just saying whatever this spec we have no control over.
Mr. Chairman. This and then review.
Yeah, it's a huge, no, I think it's up to the applicant to tell us what it means.
Well, we've, we've provided it to staff and it's one of the, it's unfortunate, and I have a copy of it in PDF. Show you what it looks like, but it's, it's, um, it's also one of those, it's like the building code, right? When you have to pay to, to have the code. So it's one of those, so it's, and the, in my opinion, in frequency that this gets used because it really is uh, basically the town.
Very specific.
Yeah, coming to ask for permission to put lights on the town property. Um, you know, you, in my opinion, you have a lot of flexibility to kinda make sure you get what you want and it's not gonna be every developer coming in looking to use this regulation. That's why, again, why we broke it out for public specific for municipal use.
So that's, that's the big spec and then you broke out the section D to essentially say, use the big spec, but you can't go higher than twenty feet.
Not, no.
Actually, D is we can.
Right, and you, it can be a hundred.
Public recreation.
Yeah.
That means government or something.
Right.
Available to the public.
Right, but they made a distinction that the private cannot do that.
Private, what does that mean? A club or does that mean just a homeowner? I don't know what's the, so it means it's just, it's available to the public.
Do you want me to?
So a commercial business would come in.
I understand this.
And put, put a field in, like a golf, golf range that they have.
Yeah.
And they would follow this, couldn't follow the spec because that's open to the public.
But I think staff did have the interpretation of that, right?
It's not.
So, so we use the, the definition here of public recreation, outdoor recreational facilities open to the public on town, state, or other lands permanently protected for, for preservation or recreation by ownership or deed restriction. So a private commercial interest could not do that because their, their, their property is not town, state or permanently protected for preservation. That's kinda why we felt that that was the way to kinda separate it out.
So even a driving range?
So, yeah, a driving range in or, or an outdoor golf course, say, uh,
That's not what this says. It says outdoor recreation. It says the lighting meets the spec.
Right, but then it references back to that definition in your regulations.
No, it's because it's outdoor. It doesn't say public.
That's why we added the D that does say public outdoor recreation activity areas.
But you're allowed to use the spec for any outdoor recreation activity. Because it says the lighting meets the spec.
Well, but once you get to light poles, which is E, right? The height of the light, except streetlights in a public right of way and public outdoor recreational lighting must not exceed a height of twenty feet or twenty-four feet in the location. So basically by, by specifying that either for a streetlight um, in public rights away or for public outdoor recreation lighting, that those are the only things where they wouldn't follow the same, the guidelines in terms of twenty feet or twenty-four feet at, that A and B.
What is that? I don't know if that's realistic though, is it? Or are we gonna be in the same issue?
You would be, so the reason it was done this way is so that if a, a private entity, right, that maybe was building a private driving range.
Well, we have a private, we have one in town.
Okay, right?
I don't know if this.
So, so they, let's pretend like they don't have lights and pretend that they were coming in to do a private driving range with lights, right? It would be permissible, but they would have to, because they can't exceed twenty feet, they would then have to come to you for a variance of that twenty feet.
We can't, you have to go to.
They go to Z B A, exactly, yep.
So what we want?
Well, that's what.
That's your control.
That was the control. So when, when the applicant, when the town came forward specifically for Groton Middle School, um, they had to go, they went to Z B A first and then got approval before they came to us for the site plan. And basically, that, that was when the commission said, you know, is this gonna be an ongoing thing? Should we tweak it just for public recreation?
I agree, we need.
Yeah.
We need this spec, but I'm not sure if it's clear or if it's written properly, that's, and, and is, is it gonna keep us out of trouble?
Well, we're trying to get you out of the trouble we're in and make it a little bit clearer, which is what we were trying to do, um, and trying to foresee some of those issues, which is why we, we did break it apart.
With staff, do you think they'd still need to go to Z B A then?
If they are not.
But.
If somebody came in, they'd still have to go to Z B A, so.
So if they're, if, if you mean, meaning if they're not public outdoor recreation, yes, they would still have to go to Z B A, yes.
Yeah.
We're solving the, the problem for the town of Groton's.
Yes.
That's what we're solving the problem.
Yes, for two, two areas.
Or for.
Well, we might have more, but why don't we permanently solve? If the spec is good enough for the town deal, why isn't good enough for a commercial recreation?
Well, I guess the, the part of, one of our challenges we were thinking about was things like driving ranges and golf courses that all of a sudden they could change and under this, they would be able to put six, eighty, eighty foot.
Does it make whether it's a town park or Sutton Park or or it's the golf range?
Once a commercial use and once.
Yeah.
A public.
The light doesn't know it's public or not, but the neighborhood does.
But we'll put up, we'll be willing to put up with certain things for a public school that we're not gonna pull up for a neighborhood driving range that makes money.
Yeah.
Aren't we doing what we asked them to do? I mean, are they doing what we asked them to do, right? Is to make the exception within the town of Groton facilities, and that's what they brought to us, yet we kept the same controls on, on private or commercial property. That's what I see.
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah, I think we're just allowing it, but limiting it.
What if you made a special permit for all the private things? So that they couldn't just go to Z B A and skate in there with their.
But if the neighbor, why does the neighbor care whether it's on public property or private property? It doesn't, I, I mean.
I do because I don't live next to public property. Right?
No, but if you do.
Yeah, just pretend.
We made the exception for the town. That was what we, we sought, we, we sought out to do. We did that, right?
But I, I think just from our internal discussions, there was a concern that if you open it up to every single owner of property in the town, you could have.
If it's open to the public.
Yes, if, if every single parcel is available to put.
To have it as a commercial use.
Does it? I don't, I don't know. I mean, that's, that, what stops, what stops me from putting up a seventy foot pole to light my child's basketball hoop in the backyard, if this allows for that.
Because it's not open to the pub, public, yeah.
It doesn't, not, this, C doesn't say it has to be open to the public. Just says where outdoor playing fields or other special activity areas are to be illuminated. So that's why we tried to, we tried to narrow it in so that athletic field lighting, tall lights, which normally are objectionable to people would be limited as much as possible, but still permissible within municipal properties. Because of the concern of one neighbor deciding to light their backyard like it's Wrigley Field. Um, because they're able to. So it allows for it to continue, but it would require a variance process, so it slows it down and it has more checks and balances than just opening it up to everybody. But that, that was our intent, um, if you feel differently, then.
Well, I'm not sure the variance process is a check.
Yeah, I don't.
If it's a, you know, revolving door, even.
I don't know, as, as. As one that's had to go through that variance process, I wouldn't say it's, it's an easy process that.
Say it's easy, but if it's something that is, people can do it and they get what they want every time.
But it, but it requires a hardship.
Right.
Right, it's, it's so, I don't know if, if I was, again, using myself as an example, if I wanted to put a seventy foot pole in my backyard try and approve a hardship for that, I think is a lot different than if I'm just able to go do it.
A lighting hardship.
I mean, every parking lot right now is controlled by existing specs.
Right.
So I, I, I don't know why we wanna try to undo that.
Yeah, I think this does a lot of good things, but I don't think it's quite there yet. I don't think this is. Not quite there yet. Um, yeah, I, it does a lot of good things, like, I still gotta work on it.
Wha- what, what would you like?
I don't know yet. I just think, I think it needs a little more control.
Okay. Well, so.
So this public hearing is, is for, for this section right now, so if there's more, I mean, we're, we're, we're just trying to rewrite these, this section right now. It's not for.
And, and if there is a radical change, then it was not advertised the way you would want to see it, which means this needs to be withdrawn in another public hearing.
Right.
I mean, one option is to go ahead and address this for municipal fields.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then again, if we see a need for private outdoor um, lighting, if we start to see variances coming in or even just inquiries, we can, we can make the change for that.
Well, why not do it now?
Because it wasn't advertised.
No, I know that, but I'm not happy about the process. I think it should have come, this should have come to us unofficially to be looked at or looked at before it went to a public hearing. I don't.
I, I know that's, that's typically our, our way of doing it when it's a town initiated.
Yeah, but usually, yeah, if, if it's a town initiated, I think we should see it and make sure it's adequate for what the intent is.
And this is.
And we are doing it this way.
Uh, necessarily, right?
I know that.
Yeah.
But that's why I think the thing has some holes.
Well, i- if we can address them at all tonight, that would be definitely preferable, um, and not that it's your problem, but part of our larger schedule here is, is in order to, the timing of all this to work out, to try to get it submitted, get it posted and advertised and all that so that we could have the hearing tonight with the hope of being able to be approved and then uh, posted for the fifteen day process. Uh, was then going to allow for the pickleball court project to be able to be submitted and hopefully go through that approval process in order for public works to be able to build that in a very tight time window this year when they're completed last year's fiscal projects and before this year's fiscal money becomes available. They'll be able to go in and pave the pickleball courts, assuming approval and all sorts of things that you haven't seen yet. Um, and so if we, if we push all that out by months now, then that'll be next year's projects. It won't, it won't happen this year. So that, that was why our timing was what it was. Um, again, I know it's not your problem, but I, if there's a way to solve your issues tonight, um, just for municipal use, we'd love to be able to do that so that we could.
But if it's a pickleball the, uh, court.
Yep.
Is that really a game? Or?
It's an outdoor athletic activity.
Activity, right.
And it's being lit by lights that are taller than twenty feet.
No, no, I, that's not what I'm concerned, concerned with it. It's, it's just. I would think a game is something that's official, has a start and an end by either periods or time.
True, and at.
And a, like a tennis court, it's open to the public, it's not a game. You know, like this was written for games.
Games defined by the number of points scored.
No, no.
The game is over unless a certain player reaches a certain number of points in excess of the.
But how do, how do you sign up? How does the public sign up for these events? They do it by the time hour or something like that, or?
No, there is no, just like a, a basketball game, while there's four twelve minute quarters.
Yeah, but that's one game, but at, at night, are you gonna have these, if it's a tennis court or something? How do, you probably have more than one event.
Well, right now.
As it comes to a certain time, you say you have, the court's open till eleven o'clock or something.
Yes, right now.
By time, not by the event, right?
Well, and so that, again, that one, that last thing that was added in there was a power reduction and that's meant for larger events when it's time to get people.
I understand that part.
Could we add for, for eight, five, three, C, four and eight, five, three, D, five? I know we changed, um, after the conclusion of each game or event, can we change it to each game, event or activity? Would that cover?
Well, it should be activity.
They just call it an activity.
You just wanna call activity? Okay.
Get rid of.
Get rid of game entirely.
Yeah, whatever, who cares, activity.
Well, if it's a defined activity, then. You know, the activity could be a scheduled time.
When it's open.
Which is fine.
Okay.
In fact, it's probably better to do that than go in over time. It's last of.
That should be changed in, uh.
Three, D, five and three, C, four.
Yeah.
Yep, I have it in both. Yep. So it's, so, so what it'll read now is all power for field lighting shall be reduced by at least seventy-five percent one hour after the conclusion of each activity and be turned off within two hours after the conclusion of the activity.
Right. And on the on that, uh, five, three, D, section four, it talks about, uh, the spec and says is amended. What the spec doesn't have, I mean, we aren't referencing what what amendment there is to the spec to begin with, right? Isn't twenty-two just the spec?
No, that's the year.
That's the year, yeah, yep.
Yeah, so if it goes to twenty-three, it's a new spec, it's not amended, is it?
Or.
Then you take out the twenty-two and it just be R P dash six. I don't know if twenty-two.
Yeah, I mean, right now, the way I'll say all those professionals refer to it as the full R P six, twenty-two, and it changes every, you know, the R P six, last year was R P six, twenty for a couple of years. Um, and so that's why we put in there as amended so that we don't get stuck in just the twenty-two, that we can adjust it every time it gets adjusted.
Twenty-two is the.
Is the most recent.
The most recent.
That's the amendment.
Yep.
Yep.
That's the most recent one.
So essentially, it's a framework that allows us to move forward without.
No, no, I understand. I just.
Seems to be. What other decision would we need, Mr. Chair?
Oh, that's usually I'm just used to seeing revisions spelled out as a revision. Wanted to make sure. I just wanna make sure it doesn't get, this whole thing doesn't get us into trouble. We need more controls, like a special permit for this lighting.
For the town of Groton or other ones?
No, for the, yeah, to be used either for the town or, why does the town have different, or what does public mean?
Yeah.
Does it mean open to the public or?
Well, again, according to the regs, it's public on public land or that is preserved specifically for um, recreation by ownership or deed. So that really does keep out commercial interests from that standpoint.
I don't know if that's true. If it's by deed, it could be, you can all use it for recreation, but it could be a commercial recreation.
But it, all right, open to the public.
It could be, but would that be a problem? It could be, but would that be a problem? Because it's already, we already know that the neighbors have already bought into someplace where it's.
No, I, I just don't know the, why we're really worried about the restriction to town-owned property versus just to choose, if it's allowed to have, say, a golf range there, does it make any difference if the town owns the golf range? Or not?
Or it is public or?
If it's used to the.
If it's used by the public, then the answer is, I think, yes, because it could be a surprise. If you live nearby somebody who's got a lot of property, and he just decides to light the heck out of it.
Or, you know.
Just to do. Now, if it's next to a place that's always been open space for that kind of recreation, then that's what you bought into. So, that's to keep out the surprise.
I don't know, well. Could be by deed.
It, it might be a surprise, we don't know that, if, if you were unaware that the deed allowed them to have that, but where do we have that in this whole thing?
Oh, I don't know.
Okay. It would be a surprise.
Alright, I guess. I don't have any other questions. Does anyone else have any other questions? Anyone on the public have any other issues? Yes. Can you say your name? Name and address, please.
Yep, uh, I'm Ellis Farmer, I live in Groton. Does this, the lighting spec, what's that?
We're in Groton.
Uh.
Your address?
Good to think, yeah. Uh, uh, fifty-six Crown Knoll Court. Yeah. Um, does the lighting spec override table two? Um, the table two is, uh, the vertical lighting, the requirements, um, I'm just unclear is how that, the spec affects that table. Cause you were concerned about, um, like, a neighbor, the lighting on the neighbor's property.
This is one eighteen. Oh, that's, that's design.
Oh, that's design, oh, yeah.
Yeah, 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 that's, that's not regulation.
Okay.
Design guideline.
This is design guidelines, not the regulation.
Oh.
Right.
I don't know what table it's made of.
Right, right, exactly.
So it doesn't have any.
Right.
No.
Impact, okay. So I guess there are no other issues that we have, so. You have any concerns with closing a public hearing? Stuff you have any?
Yep.
No, I would just, if there's any changes we can make tonight, I'd be happy to do it, but that's where we're at.
I think we did.
Yep.
Well, they're just editor, once we were addressing tonight, we just did it. I guess you'd call them editorial.
Well, what was it technical?
Yeah.
Yep. No, but I mean, they're not changing the intent.
Oh, no.
Right.
It's right.
Yeah, correct.
They don't change the intent.
Not at all.
So I'll make a motion then to, uh, close, close the public hearing for, uh, REG A twenty-four zero 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 one, outdoor recreation lighting amendment.
Second?
There are second, so it's moved in second. Any discussion on the motion? Vote on the motion to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to the next public hearing. We have is, uh, spec twenty-four zero 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 one, multi-family conversion, ten twenty-eight Paquonic Road, would you read the legal ad?
Notice hereby given, the following public hearing will be held on March twenty-six, twenty twenty-four at seven P M, community room two, Town Hall Annex one three four Groton Long Point Road, and virtually via the Zoom platform to hear the following. Special permit twenty-four dash zero 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 one, one zero two eight Paquonic Road, pin one six nine eight zero six three seven zero eight five seven. MTC zone, proposal is to convert an existing martial arts studio into four one-bedroom apartments. Review is per sections five point one dash eight dot H and nine point four of the zoning regulations. Linda Gabriel Essendo Gabriel Properties LLC owner, Jack McCartney, CLA engineers applicant. A Zoom meeting link will be posted to the town's website, meeting calendar. Applications are on file and available for public inspection during the normal business hours at the planning department, one three four Groton Long Point Road, Groton, Connecticut, dated this fifteenth day of March two thousand and four at Groton, Connecticut.
Yeah, we can't, uh, come up and make their presentation.
Yes, I'm gonna.
Yeah, just like that, yep.
No, they'll, you can aim them.
Uh, my name is Ellen Bartlett with CLA Engineers, and I'm representing the owner. Um, this property is located at the intersection of Pa- Paquonic Road and Laurel Wood Road, um, to the east. Can you hear me?
Can you?
I think so, just because I think it's actually dark when they're. You can go ahead.
Okay. To the east is a Dunkin' Donuts, to the west is a, a mobile gas station, just to get everyone oriented to where we, where we are. Um, the property is zoned M. MTC, mixed-use town center, and consists of approximately one point two acres. Um, the existing two-story building, which is shown in orange, uh, the first floor has a commercial space that was previously a martial arts studio. Um, it, it's been vacant for some time now. Um, also on the first floor is, um, seven other apartments. And the second floor is all apartments. There's, um, ten apartments on the second floor, so we have a total of seventeen existing apartments and then a vacant commercial space. So, we are here tonight proposing to, um, turn this commercial space into four more apartments, so there'd be a total of twenty-one apartments in this building. Um, and, and as part of this application, we're proposing a number, number of improvements to the site, all of which were in accordance with the zoning regulations for MTC's district. We're proposing, um, some additional landscaping in different areas on the site. Along Paquonic Road, we're showing some additional street trees and some, um, native shrubs. We're also proposing a five-foot wide planting bed to put in, um, to have plantings there all, all the different seasons, except for obviously the winter. We're also proposing some landscaping to provide additional screening for all the, um, mechanical areas, um, the gas meter, and also the dumpster. Um, presently, the front of the building doesn't have any doors facing out onto Route one. So what we're proposing to do is add three new doors on the front and run a sidewalk that would access these doorways. That way, it looks like the front of the building instead of the side of the building. Um, we're also adding a new handicap space and a new handicap ramp to access the front of the building and these new apartments that we're proposing. In accordance with the design standards for the MTC district, um, the exist, the existing five-foot concrete sidewalk that runs along the frontage will be replaced with a ten-foot wide concrete sidewalk, cause that's what the regulations ask for. There's also gonna be a five-foot vegetated strip between the edge of the road and the sidewalk. I call it a landscape verge, but it, um, just provides a buffer between the road and the, the new lands, the new sidewalk. Um, the new sidewalk will also run across the existing access drive, and, um, that section of the sidewalk will be stamped concrete, so it has a different textural look than the rest of the sidewalks out there. Unfortunately, there's one large tree at the intersection that, um, is shown in red, that is going to be, it's gonna have to be removed. Um, Connecticut DOT and the town's Public Works Department both have required that that tree come down as it's causing some serious issues with sightlines for anybody pulling out of Laurel Wood Road onto Route one. They, they can't see very far because of the tree. So instead, we're going to add a new, um, street se- street tree set back another fifteen feet, so it will not cause any, um, safety issues. As part of this project, we're requesting an elimination for the installation of sidewalks on Laurel, Laurel Wood Road um, for a few different reasons. Um, there are presently no sidewalks on the west side of Laurel Wood Road. Um, the sidewalks are not re- recommended along Laurel Good Road by the Master Pedestrian Bicycle and Trail Plan, and there'll be no significant pedestrian movement to this, to and from the site from Laurel Wood Road. Um, in the past, a waiver was granted for the frontage sidewalks on Laurel Road by the Planning Commission in December of two thousand and fifteen. That's when the, um, apartments were first approved for this building. There was a waiver granted for the sidewalks, but, um, instead the terminology is different. We're not requesting a waiver. We're requesting the elimination of the requirement. One other issue for the site is the existing parking on the site exceeds what the maximum parking allowed for, um, in the zoning regulations. What the owner has found that there's more parking needed here than what, what's allowed by the regulations. They're finding that every apartment needs at least two cars during the weekdays, and on the weekend, they need more parking because there's a lot of young people living here, they entertain, they have guests, they have people coming for the weekend. They need additional parking, and it's part of, one of the reasons why these apartments is, are, um, in such demand is that there is ample parking provided on the site. And, um, they know they can have company, they know they can come and go, and they don't have to worry about finding a parking space. Also, as part of this application package, in the statement of use for the special permit, um, we describe in detail how the project conforms to the special permit criteria. Pretty much what we're proposing. Um, one other thing, though, there is some rooftop mechan- mechanics on the, um, on the roof, and we're, we're going to provide a, um, some kind of a fence up there, so that from the road, you won't be able to see that. Right now, you can't. So, we're doing some improvements to make sure you conform to the regulations. Um, we're asking for four more apartments in a commercial area, commercial portion of the building that's been vacant for some time. And, um, we'd like to keep the parking that's there, because it, it gets used on the weekends. Uh, I think that pretty much sums up the project. It's pretty straightforward. We're trying to conform to the regulations and address all the, we've addressed all the staff comments that have come our way.
Yeah, all we're talking about is a special permit.
Yes, I know.
We're adding the apartments.
Yes.
Does staff have any?
Yeah, I'll, and I can address the, the site plan, uh, additional stuff later on.
Yes, the site plan will be discussed later in the agenda.
So in terms of, um, the special permit, um, the required certificates of mailing are all in order. Um, legal notice, notice has been, has been posted as required. Um, there have been no communications from the public on this. Um, the applicant, the application complies with section five point one dash eight, uh, dat, dot H, uh, multi-unit dwellings conversion. Uh, it also meets the special permit criteria in section nine point four dash six of the zoning regs, and the proposed use will not have any detrimental effects upon public health, safety, and welfare.
Does anyone in the, uh, public wish to, uh, address the commission on the, this application? Open, none? Open up to the, uh, commission for their comments or questions, Hal?
And this is just for allowing?
This is just, yes, just for allowing the six additional apartments.
Four, four additional.
Four additional, and then the site plan will be discussed as it's on the agenda.
I don't think I, I do have, I, I guess I'll only throw it out as part of this is, it's a, it's a really deep Gabriel's spaces, it's really deep. How does apartments fit into that? It's two in the front and two in the back and space in between and that's the only thing that puzzles me. It really doesn't go to whether or not you can have apartments.
The apartments all are in the front. We did prevent, um, submit floor plans that show how the new apartments are gonna fit into the space.
You have that, okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
And that will have to be, go through the, um, building, building.
Alright, yeah, that's, that's not, I just, I'm just puzzled as to.
Yeah.
Having, what, the sixty feet, how deep is that?
The, the building itself?
Yeah. It's a hundred feet deep, so I don't know how you do a fifty-foot deep apartment with.
So. You want me to address it really quickly?
Yeah.
You actually don't, um, so, um, they, there are pre-existing apartments already in there, so there are already seventeen there, and they, they don't go front to back. Um, the section that has not been built yet is that section in the front there. So that's where three are, are actually, the three with the three front doors are actually in that front, front section there. And they're further.
Right, don't go very far back, okay, alright, alright. Alright, I'm sorry, I, I, I have no issues. No issues, Mr. Chair.
So.
No, no comments.
No comment.
You have any?
No issues.
I have no issues either. Does anyone have any concerns with closing the public hearing? Does staff have any? Reasons, the applicant have any concerns with closing the public hearings?
No, that'd be, that would be great.
This is just for the additions, and I'll make a motion then to close the, uh, public hearing for spec twenty-four zero 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 one, multi-family conversion, ten twenty-eight, Paquonic Road. Second, moved in second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none will vote on the, uh, motion to close the public hearing for the multi-family conversion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. The next public hearing we have is spec twenty-four zero 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 two, Three Tails, seven fifteen, Noank Leger Road.
And I will read the announcement.
Save that.
I have to read the announcement.
Have to read the announcement.
Notice hereby given that the following public hearing will be held on March twenty-six, twenty twenty-four at seven P M, community room two, Town Hall Annex one three four Groton Long Point Road, and virtually via the Zoom platform to hear the following. Special permit twenty-four zero 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 two, seven one five Noank Leger Road, property index number two six zero nine one one five five seven four eight seven, RU twenty zone. Proposal is to expand an existing outdoor recreation facility on site that includes operating a ropes course, a zip line, and other outdoor attractions and activities. Review is per sections five point one dash three point D and nine point four of the zoning regulations. Uh, seven fifteen, Noank Leger Road LLC owner, Clay Kimmy, Tree Trails Adventure three LLC applicant. A Zoom meeting link will be posted to the town's website, meeting calendar. Applications are on file and available for public inspection during normal business hours at the planning department, one three four Groton Long Point Road, Groton, Connecticut, dated this fifteenth day of March, two thousand and twenty-four, in Groton, Connecticut.
Okay. Yeah, I'll make sure.
Yep, good evening, Kirk Prochuranda with LaRrow Engineering Associates, fifteen Thane Street, Groton, Connecticut. Ellis Farmer, LaRrow Engineering Associates, fifteen Thane Street, Groton, Connecticut, here representing True Shells Adventures. Yeah. Okay, just to orient us, north is to the top of the sheet, Noank Ledger Road to the right, Interstate ninety-five to the north. Uh, so the project includes uh an existing facility uh located at seven fifteen Noank Ledger Road, uh known as Tree Trails Adventures. They are the new owner of the property. We're in the RU twenty zone. Uh, the overall site is about forty-nine acres. And the proposed use is about twenty-three acres. Uh, by way of permitting background, we received uh inland wetlands permit approval on January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. As you can see, the wetlands are the light area. The proposed recreational use area is in dark gray. And I'll describe uh some of the things there. Um, again, it's an existing facility. The new owners have taken it over and they're proposing a few minor improvements. Um, essentially, the applicant wants to continue operation of the site as an outdoor recreation facility, ropes courses and those kinds of things. It's a fairly low impact uh operation. There's really no uh permanent buildings. Uh, very much a limited, impervious area. I'll talk about that in a minute. So really, they want to continue operation of the course, and part of the application is to allow a little bit of flexibility for ongoing operation, but also at times modification of some of the rope courses uh in response to things like trees, tree conditions for safety, um slightly modifying where some of those are as as uh physical changes occur to the site. There's really two new elements to the project that are being proposed. One is a zip line, and you can see that near the center running north to south. And that's essentially two wooden towers with a wire rope between them where people hook up and zip along the zip line. Uh, and the second piece is in the existing parking areas. You can see to the, to the north. Those are currently gravel parking areas. We're proposing to add some handicapped accessible spaces. And we want those accessible spaces to be paved because we can control the cross slope, control rutting, and make sure that they're good, firm, stable purpose uh surfaces for handicap parking. Um, right now, the site has hundred and twenty-six spaces approved. We're proposing a hundred and twenty-three spaces. The hatching that you see on there uh is just to locate the spaces. That doesn't mean that they're paved. Again, they're gravel, gravel lots. Lighting is very limited on the site. There is existing lighting. No new lighting is proposed. As part of the application, they have some string lights in various parts of the course, and that, that uh may get moved depending on where the ropes courses move. It's very flexible. It's not really a permanent installation. That lighting is similar to what you may see on your, on your outdoor deck. There are small, low wattage, open bulbs. And again, that will follow the ropes courses, and as things change, that lighting location may change accordingly. Um, very limited utilities on the site, electric power. There is uh no, no sanitary systems. They use porta potties, so there's no uh building. Porta potties are serviced by a commercial commercial uh entity. No new utilities proposed. Uh, no grading or drainage is proposed as part of the application. Uh, erosion and sedimentation controls will be installed as part of the work for the zip line and the paving for the lots, again, fairly limited. We are requesting a waiver for the sidewalk uh frontage. I know that the plan uh the town's master plan calls for a sidewalk in the future on the east side of the roadway. We're on the west side, so we are requesting a waiver for that. Really, that's it. Pretty simple project. Again, the zip line and the handicap spaces are really the only new construction proposed as part of the application. And then the desire is to maintain the existing operation of the zip line or the the ropes courses and those things and allow for some flexibility to adapt that over time.
So staff make their present.
Thank you, and this is with regards to the special permit. Exactly, exactly. So the mailings are in order, the required mailings. Um, as noted, there were, there have been previous special permits on this property, the first one in two thousand and eleven for a paintball facility. And then in two thousand and fifteen to change it to an aerial ropes course. There are several conditions for outdoor recreation. Um, this project does meet all of them. It meets the setbacks and the buffer requirements. Uh, this special permit will allow essentially an expansion of the area to be used for recreation um so that the aerial ropes course can be expanded in some areas and adjusted again as environmental conditions dictate. Um, subject to, of course, wetland permitting and and site plan approval. Any major change in the activity out here that would create a lot of noise, such as a water park, concerts, that sort of thing would need another special permit. And actually, before we go on, are any, I I can see some of your folks who are here, if you let me know if they want to speak and we can promote them.
Any?
I, I can see on Zoom too that they're, that they're here, so.
Nobody's raising their hands.
Right, so I'll let you guys know that if you raise your hand, if you want to speak to any of the questions um on Tree Trails, um you know, just raise your hand and we'll promote you.
Yeah, does anyone in the public wish to address the commission on this request? I don't see any hands raised. So open it up to commissioners if they have any concerns. This is just for the special permit. Site plan application later on the agenda. Start with you, I have no issues.
Um, I don't know if it's in, Mike, and, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I don't know if it's an issue now, but I've been, for many years, I was asking about the lights up there. And I don't know if it should be addressed now, but I don't believe that they were ever.
That's a
That, that's definitely part of this application. So it, absolutely, to leave that the lights that are existing out there now, as well as some other unauthorized um activities done by the previous owner. That's also part of the site, that's also part of the site.
Make sure that that is.
Absolutely.
We can address that on the site.
Exactly, that's right.
I'll, I'll let it go, thank you.
But the, all we're proposing now is really
The special permit to the land of this house here, that's right.
Increase the land as
Right.
identified in the site, it's really what we're doing.
I guess I'm not clear on what's happened here, quite honestly. You say there's increased activities to some extent?
Uh, no, the site will continue on with its current, current use uh with, under new ownership.
Right.
The new activities are really two, new, new construction is the zip line that runs north to south, which is two, two wood towers. And then the addition of the paved accessible parking spaces.
Right, no, I got that, thanks. I just was wondering, when you say ropes courses and things here, are, where they're going now, is that going to change at all? Is that going to be expanded?
Yeah, great question. Um, the, the intent is that as the ropes courses get used, uh because it's all uh uh natural, there's no paved paths or those kinds of things. If there were to be rutting or issues with tree limbs or something, and they wanted to uh adjust the location of some of those courses, the hope is that as part of the approval, they'd have the flexibility to do that.
How far could they adjust the course then, could it?
Only within the limits uh of the area, uh and as was indicated, if there was anything substantial. Um, for example, if something encroached closer to a wetland within, in the regulated area, they'd have to go through the proper permitting. Uh, any large scale changes would have to go through the appropriate permitting process. This application is just to allow some flexibility to adjust the location of those uh as physical conditions dictate, to make sure that it's, it's remained safe.
Right, no, um, but for example, if you went a hundred feet, um, say from the wetland or whatever, you could have a course up to that, right? Isn't that formidable or?
Right, without, without getting another wetland permit, but any activity within that regulated area, they would have to get a permit.
No, I understand that, yeah. But if they went up to a hundred feet, you have plenty of space to do that on the west side, right? If I'm looking at it correctly.
Yes, and just to confirm though, that would not include things such as physical construction, paved pathways. It would all be similar to what's out there today, just readjusted in its location.
And for the lighting that you have? I don't understand string lights, if that means there are like a, a light bulb?
They're actually uh kind of similar to what you, you see out at uh some restaurants. They're actually little bulbs, almost like Christmas tree lights, but they're not colored. Uh, so they can be hung up and easily moved and relocated if a particular pathway was to be adjusted, then they could just move those lights. So they're not really installed lighting.
Right, no, I have that, but how is that going to illuminate an area?
It's, it's very dim illumination. It's purely for, for, for safety and and a limited aesthetic. Yeah, they're definitely not akin to a parking lot light or something like that. Very low light output with those.
Is it fair to say the activity is basically to the extent of those lights?
Uh, yeah, for the most part. Yes. It's primarily a daytime use. All the, 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 the facility stops at ten o'clock. Obviously, it's not really a winter activity uh type facility, and all the lights will be shut off by eleven o'clock regardless.
Okay, thank you very much.
I was a little curious too about why this requires a special permit.
Because that's what your regulations say.
But it's an expansion beyond fifty percent?
It is, it is, no, 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 it's not beyond fifty percent. So the other special permits um were with regards to activity on the east side of that central wetland. It did not um have any kind of recreational activity on the other side. So at some point, they're going to want to shift some of their ropes course to that other area. So this special permit will allow them to use essentially the entire property as opposed to piecemealing it special permit by special permit as they add, you know, another little bit here and another little bit there. This special permit will allow the outdoor recreation on the property subject to site plan approval.
And the zip line is?
Exactly.
Hmm, it's something new.
That, that's right.
That's not just an approval then of a new site plan. It's another special permit if they do it again?
No, the idea is not to have another special permit as they incrementally expand in one area or contract in another. It's to essentially land that use on this property. It's for outdoor recreation. Any changes in the facilities, sure, site plan approval, yeah.
All right, that was basically
Yep.
My only question about this, about the special permit.
Yep.
Um, Michael, I think I have some questions during the site, particularly on the lighting issues.
Yeah.
I just cover in the site plan, but my only question is when you mentioned the parking spots, how often are those one twenty-six to one twenty-three filled?
Uh, not often. Typically, uh, one of the, uh, very special use permits typically fire fast, but missing part of the program, there's
Yeah.
And so there are only five that are all filled. Usually when we're at capacity, it's been a few best don't have the
Twenty-six, yeah, so it's very marginal, very marginal change. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all.
And just to confirm, our proposed parking is one twenty-three.
Right, right, that's what the three loss, right?
And no hands raised. I have no comments. So does anyone have any concern on with uh closing the public hearing for this special permit? Applicants have any concerns?
No.
Staff have any?
Yep.
Any commissioners? So I'll make a motion and to close the public hearing for uh spec twenty-four zero 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 two, Three Trails, all those is there a second?
Seconds.
Moved in second. Any comments on the motion, questions? Hearing none will vote on the uh the motion for closing the public hearing for the two, three trails special permit. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. Okay, we can move on to consideration of public hearings. First one is outdoor recreational lighting, I'm not REG A twenty-four zero zero one. And I guess we had you had some changes uh out. I assume that we want to make
Yeah, that, that was just to get rid of fully shielded.
We wanted to do that. You have some other editorial?
Yeah, get the game out.
To get uh
Yep.
Game's activity, yeah.
And uh gaming will replace Ben? Or game with event?
No, event or activity. I thought before we said activity.
Yeah.
Yes.
Ultimately. Change game to, game or, want to say or activity?
I think we were just gonna say activity.
Activity.
That's it.
Or activity.
Get rid of that, well, yeah, just say.
Say, activity.
Activity, yeah, that's what I have.
That's fine. Whatever it appears.
So I see um that appears um in, in four different places. Um, the first one is in eight five dash three C, number four um in the middle of the sentence and at the very end. So that's two changes to activity there. And then in eight point five dash three D, number five, same thing, twice again in the middle of the sentence and then at the very end.
Yeah.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um you seem to stumble, I guess we're all stumbling on the word public outdoor recreation. Would it make sense to call it municipal outdoor recreation, recreation? Because you actually called it that in the first sentence, or other municipal special outdoor activity.
We had considered that, um, but the reason why we didn't go with that is because there's no definition for that, so we'd have to come up with a brand new definition, so. But yes, we actually considered that.
Okay.
And those are the only changes we we have, right?
Yep, yep.
And those we consider as editorial because they don't change the intent of it, so. So I guess we gotta insert um so in our motion, we, we can't call these technical, we have to
No, you need to put them in there.
We have to put them
That's right.
to it, so we want to change. To it, so we want to change. So I guess we'll add two more. Pair of two more. So I'll make a motion and to. For rega twenty-four zero 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 one. To approve zoning regulation text amendment application. Rega twenty-four zero 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 one to one amend section eight-point-five dash. Three C outdoor recreation activity areas to. Clarify the specific needs and requirements. Of the. Recreational activity.
I think you can read through these and then say with the following modifications.
And yeah. To add section eight-point-five dash three D public outdoor recreation activity areas to create standards. For public. Recre- outdoor recreation lighting. Three amend section eight-five dash three E. Light poles. And I think this should be changed to in to exempt. The the height of the light poles for. Public outdoor recreation, which is what we've done. Item four. We will. Say.
Think you could just say with the following modifications.
Well, you wanna say, yeah, we could say.
Push those.
Uh amend sections. Eight, well, I was gonna say. Amend section eight-point-five dash. Three C. To delete the. Term fully shielded. And. In eight-five-three. That points C four and eight-five-three D five. Change. Game. To activity in four places. The Town of Groton Planning and Zoning Commission and Dobson regulation text amendment rega. Twenty-four zero zero one pursuant to the following findings and reason for approval. One. This zoning text amendment is consistent with the town's. Twenty sixteen Plan of Conservation and Development. With particular regards to recommendations. Regarding the high priority. Community need. Of municipal. Facilities and athletic fields, including consideration of field lighting. As well as revising the zoning regulations to increase recreation requirements. And providing standards for improvements. Two, this amendment is consistent with the town's municipal coastal program. And CGS sections twenty-two A dash ninety through twenty-two A dash. One eleven. Three, this amendment is made in accordance with a comprehensive plan for the town of Groton. And provides for reasonable consideration. Of the environment and Long Island Sound in accordance with. Provisions of CGS. Eight dash two. The effective date of this amendment shall be April twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Is there a second?
Second.
Smooth and second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yes, Mister Chairman.
Yes.
That uh. It was mentioned before, I forgot just that. That term to remove fully shielded slash recessed, it also occurs in eight-point-five-three C. And should also be removed from there. Under number two.
Yep, yeah, the. There are both of those, yeah.
So we just, we can add that in.
Yep. Yep, the two spaces.
Who's who was the second on?
Uh, that with me and I would second.
Agree, you agree with this?
Yeah, I agree and I would second that as well. And and is, are you re- removing fully shielded slash recessed?
Yes. So we have a motion.
Yeah.
Good stuff.
These things are permanent. They're permanent. Yeah, you don't wanna make them.
Okay. So no one has any other concerns with the motion and we'll vote on. On the emotion to approve to. The outdoor recreation lighting zoning text amendment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed and abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously.
Go to work.
And turn on the lights. Okay. Next, we have uh spec twenty-four zero 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 one multi-family conversion. Ten twenty-eight chronic road. Have a closed. Amendment. Does anyone have any concerns with? This amendment. For. The special permit to add the additional four.
I just had a. Question for staff. How is the fifty percent? Uh determined? When? For things like the electric vehicle charging stations, which are not, because I see. Four apartments, which represents about twenty-five percent increase.
Yep.
And then the outside is probably about twenty-five percent of the. Site, so I just, I mean, I'm just guessing, but how is that done?
Uh we actually went through that and basically it was under the fifty percent, so that's why actually there would, there was no requirement to add EV for that. The change, the change is part of this site plan was less than the fifty percent that would have triggered it.
So what I was seeing wasn't, didn't add up to that.
Uh when we went through it and in, we didn't get the fifty percent, so.
Yeah, this is not.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Go ahead.
All we're doing is.
Okay. Sorry, I jumped the guy.
Just adds. Adds the apartments.
Gotcha, you too.
So I'll make, okay, this is worth thinking, isn't it? The last one is even worse. Well, there's no special. Permit to simul. Motion, I make a motion then to approve special permit twenty-four dash zero 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 one. Multi-family conversion ten twenty-eight. Chronic road to convert the remaining commercial space. For one-bedroom apartments. Findings and reasons for approval. The commission finds that this application is coordinated, complies with zoning regulations. Section five-point-one dash eight. Point H. Multi-unit dwellings conversion. The commission also finds that this application complies. The special permit criterion section nine. Point four dash six of the zoning regulations. In that it does. Not alter the essential characteristics of the area, does not cause traffic congestion or safety conflicts. And does not conflict with the purpose of these regulations. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Does anyone have any concerns with the motion? Questions, uh, we will vote on the uh motion then to approve special permit for the multi-family conversion. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. And the next item is uh spec twenty-four zero zero two. Tree trails, seven fifteen Noink Leger Road. We have a proposed amendment uh. Does anyone have any concerns with the uh motion to approve the special permit? This is not the site plan, this is the special permit.
Thank you.
But gets confused.
Yeah.
Well, the other ones we all had a separate. They're intertwined. Among the trees. Okay, and I'll make a motion and to approve. Special permit twenty-four zero 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 two. Tree trails, seven fifteen Noink Leger Road for the expansion of an outdoor recreation facility. Findings and reasons for approval. The commission finds that. The recreation facility meets the requirements of section five-point-one dash. Three-point-D of the zoning regulations regarding. Commercial recreation outdoor. The commission also finds that the expansion of the recreation facility is in compliance with section nine point four. Of the zoning regulations and that the activity. Is appropriate for the site. It does not alter the essential characteristics of the area. It provides adequate and suitable vehicular circulation for the use. Does not conflict with the purposes of these regulations. And will reasonably minimize the potential environmental. Impacts on adjacent water bodies, including. Long Island Sound. Is there a second?
Second.
Moves in second. Does anyone have any? Concerns or questions on the motion? And we'll vote on the motion to approve the special permit twenty-four. Zero 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 two tree trails. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any followers? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. Okay, next, I'll go on to. Move approval of minutes of previous meetings. We'll entertain uh, we have two minutes here, March seventh and twelfth. I'll entertain a motion for approving the minutes of March. Seventh.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes for March seventh.
There are second?
Second.
Or the second. Does anyone have any uh? Corrections? To the. Minutes?
I do not.
Hmm.
I do not.
This is about the simplest we can get.
That was the C I P.
It was, yeah.
It is what it is.
It's the first time we had no comments, really. Yeah, okay. So we have none, then we'll vote on the approval of the minutes of March, meeting of March seventh. All the house in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. Next, we have is uh minutes of March twelfth. I'll entertain a motion for. Moving the minutes. So moved, so moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Doesn't any, anyone have any corrections? Shannon will have nothing to. Okay. She did a good job. And so we'll vote on approval of the minutes. Of uh. March twelfth. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. That's good. Next uh item on the agenda is public communications. Does anyone uh have any, on the commission have any communications? I did see that we did get a. I did receive a copy of a memo that was sent to the town managers. Regarding the C I P. Um meeting results, that's what I have. The staff have any?
Uh, no, um, just to note that you did receive this afternoon um an email correspondence regarding the S B Butler School.
Right.
So we'll talk about that next month.
Sure. Or I can address it under report of staff.
Yeah, yeah.
That's fine.
If you want to, yes, it might be good. Does anyone in the public wish to address the commission on any? Yes, if you want to uh step up to the podium, state your name and address.
My name is Tom Farley. I live at thirty-four Brookhaven Road. Um I realize I may be early to the party here for this because it's a new application on for tonight. Uh the gas station on Long Hill Road, and I think there's a problem. With the zoning and the allowable uses for that zoning. It's zoning for CN, which is commercial neighborhood, if I'm correct. And there's nothing at all about a gas station that fits the regulations, not one thing. It's better suited for a CR. We went through this about a year and a half ago. With a. Car wash. Application that was approved on a neighboring lots. And as a resident who will be facing a gas station. I do have concerns with this. I know it puts the commission in a bind, but. There is nothing at all about a gas station that is pedestrian connection friendly, green space friendly. Serves as a buffer or a transition to a residential neighborhood. In fact, the back of the property will be on Brookhaven Road, which is a residential neighborhood. So I think the real issue is the problem with what's acceptable. In in that zone. I just want the commission to be aware of that and take that into consideration. I haven't seen the site plans yet. So I don't know what the questions are, but. I think if it is approved, I think that it needs to be consideration for noise, light, traffic. Buffering the whole nine yards because it will negatively affect. Everybody in that neighborhood. I just want to get that on record. And I'm sure it'll be back when the plan is. Brought to the commission, so.
And and you're welcome to come in to the, the, to the front counter. We can give you a set of the plans.
I appreciate that. I I will, so. I just wanted to break it up.
Yeah, sure.
We know, what address is that, sorry?
Uh three oh five to three eighty-eight Long Hill Road.
Understood, thank you.
Yes, I believe it. There's one of the lots on Brookhaven is one of them considered seventeen Brookhaven Road.
Right.
That's residential street.
Could you say your last name again?
Old Farrell. It's O apostrophe F A R R E L L.
Does anyone else wish to address commission time?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay. Special permanency. Subdivisions is our next item, Colonel Leger Estates. Why we have a memo that doesn't say anything?
No, because I was expecting to get an an update and a status report, which I did at at five-thirty this evening. So so I did not send that out to you. Um so I can either send it out to you tomorrow or we can just place it on the next agenda.
Okay.
Which would you prefer or both?
Might as send it. Yeah, might as well send it out.
Okay, very good.
And and we should, I guess formally.
I think so.
We should formally uh discuss it.
I think so.
Even if we don't have any comments.
Yes.
We'd recognize it.
And that way it'll be attached to the agenda.
Since you received it after business hours.
Yeah. Okay.
Was it supposed, was it due the month due? This time?
It, so we've been getting updates on the second meeting of each month. Um and. In response to your concerns last time about wanting a deadline, I I did a a short form for them and listed out all the significant activities. And asked them to tell, you know, when, what the status is and when it would be complete. And I called it a monthly report and they took that to mean. It's due on the first of the month. So, so at any rate, I think we've got that that straight and we'll put it on the next agenda.
And then we'll start the monthly.
Yeah, exactly.
That's fine. Okay. Now on to uh. Site plan, so we did get dates and stuff.
We did.
Oh, good. Site plans, uh we have a S I T twenty-four zero zero one, multi-family conversion. Ten twenty-eight chronic road, the applicant. Return. You know, turning those lights on didn't add anything to this.
Not this time.
No, I mean, the camera. Adjusted itself. To what the light was previously.
But you'll notice the recording thing keeps blinking.
Oh, I have noticed, um.
When that camera is.
Right.
Oh, it does?
It it does. It's been, it's been flickering, um although I've, I've asked Shannon whether she's seeing that, you know, remotely and she is not, so.
I think the lights are too bright.
No, I was surprised that it auto- it automatically adjusted the, the view of the. Based on the light automatically and it was just as visible. Then in fact, easier to read because it was dark. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm gonna pretty much show you what I already told you with the special permit. Um, I'm not used to it being separate.
Yeah.
But, so. Um, again, with knowing the site and the location, it's fifteen, I can notice and the um mobile gas station. And um. You're doing some improvements to the site plan to bring them in compliance with the regulations for the um. M T C district. And it's an existing two-story building. Um, the first floor. In the past, we could use for a martial arts studio. But and. A good portion of the first floor was apartments. There's seven apartments here in the first floor. The second floor is all apartments and that's about ten of. Yeah, ten apartments on the second floor. So you have a total of existing seventeen apartments, in, in the existing building right now. And then some vacant commercial spaces in the wild. So we want to put four new apartments in the existing building on the first block. And as part of that, we want to make the front of the building look like. That faces group one look like the front of the building, because right now the entrance is on the side and there are no doors in the front. Um, this was something you did. It is discussions with staff that that would be preferred, so we've added three doors and we're running the sidewalk. Uh, along the front of the building to access these three doors and there will be new apartments in there. Um, we moved the handicap space down. And we're putting in a new handicap ramp, so these apartments are going to be handicapped accessible. We're also adding landscaping in the front. Um, some new street trees, some, um. Some native shrubs are going in there and then there's going to be a plan of that five feet wide that runs across the whole front of the building. And unfortunately, we have to take down one big tree that's at the corner because it is a safety hazard, there are, um. Sideline issues and Connecticut D O T and. Um, the town's public works department have both asked, actually been asked, they're requiring that that tree come down. So we're replacing it with a new street tree to set back further so that it doesn't provide us a safety issue. For sightlines for cars pulling out of Laurelwood Road onto Route one. And then in accordance with the design standards for the M T C district. We're, um, replacing the existing five foot wide concrete sidewalk. With a ten foot wide concrete sidewalk, which is required under the regs. And we're also providing a five foot vegetated verge in front of there, so between the pavement, edge of pavement and the sidewalk will be a five foot landscaped strip. The sidewalk also will cross the existing driveway. And that portion of the sidewalk will look different from that, it'll be stamped concrete, look texturally different. And we're also adding two handicap, um, accessible ramps. To, um, so when you go on that sidewalk, when you hit the driveway, you'll go down the ramp and back up to it. So, um. That brings it into conformance with the, the regulations for the M T C. In the past, um, when the special permit and site plan was done, when they first put apartments in there. In two thousand and fifteen, the, um. In requirement for sidewalk on Laurelwood Road was waived. And for three different reasons, one is that, um, there are no sidewalks on the west side of Laurelwood Road. Um, another reason was that if you go to the master pedestrian bicycle and trail plan. There, it does not, does not recommend sidewalks along Laurelwood Road. And also they'll be, we don't anticipate any traffic, pedestrian traffic on Laurelwood Road walking into this apartment building. So, um. Because waders. Aren't allowed anymore, so we're asking to, um, eliminate that requirement. Um, the other issue is the parking, we looked, we looked at the parking regulations. For the twenty one apartments that could be here, if, if this is approved. Um. We're above what's allowed to park me. And it, it only just feels like it really isn't needed, we go out there on the weekend, parking lot's got a lot more cars than the. Thirty three spaces that allow under the regulations. Um. Either the one bedroom apartments mostly have two people living in the bedroom and each have a party and drive to work. Um, and then on the weekends. You gotta count for guests, they come, they stay for the weekend, they have a dinner party, there's, there's guests, they come and go pretty, pretty regularly. On the weekends, and it's one of the reasons why these pa, these apartments are so popular and they're always rented is that. They have that parking and people want it and people need it, so we're requesting that. Existing parking stay as is, we are adding some. Concrete curb stops in an area where. Um. Staff requested it and rightly so, because the distance between the. Vertical distance between the sidewalk and the pavement isn't enough to stop a parking. Coming right up there and hitting the road. Um, that's pretty much what we're proposing at this time and what we're asking. Happy to answer any questions?
The staff have any?
Yes, um, so I'll just follow up a little bit on a, uh, uh, to reiterate a few points and then a, a couple other pieces too, so. Um, as discussed, the applicant is looking to convert the remaining commercial space, which was a martial arts studio into four one-bedroom apartments. This will result in the entire property being used just for residential purposes, it'll eliminate the commercial piece and that will give a total of twenty one apartments. Um, as was noted, um, uh, based upon those twenty one apartments, a maximum of thirty three parking spaces are required. Currently, the, um, there exists sixty two spaces. Um, uh, it was also mentioned as part of the design standards for the M T C that. All frontage sidewalks along Route one, um, must be ten foot wide, the applicant has proposed this on the plans and shown that. Um, there are new sidewalks, um, there and, and also new ramps, they'll all be ADA compliance, including the, the. The entrances and the apartments on the, on, in the front. Um, as was mentioned, the applicant requested the elimination of the requirement to install sidewalks on Laurelwood Road. On the east side, there currently exists a five foot wide sidewalk, um, it stretches through the entire neighborhood and. As was mentioned, the, the grotten pedestrian bicycle and. Trail, trail, thank you. Plan does not, um, actually specify any, um, a, uh, any sidewalks on that side. And the existing one on the east side does help address the pedestrian access. Um. Uh, pass approvals have noted and have required a note of potential driveway, future driveway connectors. Um, and you'll see as part of the motion, there's also, um, another note there that if in the future the commission determines that it is necessary for the improved. Traffic circulation and safety for the site, a connecting driveway from the east and or west shall be installed. Um. Uh, the landscaping, this new landscaping proposed for the front of the building until, as well as the screen, the mechanicals and the dumpster. Um, in addition, um, as was mentioned the first time, um, on the roof, the mechanicals that are seen from, from, from not only Plaquenac, but also Laurelwood will be. Will be screened, um. And I think the last part is just. Is that, that tree on the corner of Laurelwood and Route one, um, due to the size and due to the location, has been requested to be removed by. Connecticut D O T as well as Town D B W. So, that's what I have for that. If you have any other questions, I'm happy to address.
Open a commission, uh, or any other questions, I'll start with you, Kevin.
Very happy about that, thank you. Um, my only question, because we, we always have to apply this, right? Um, did the number of parking spaces, and you say they get really used a great deal more. Did that change after COVID, was there anything, or has that been pretty consistent with your rental of the difference of the spaces? No, has it changed since COVID, was there, has there been an inflection point where you, you, you find people are, are parking more than say ten years ago?
Right now, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Could you, could you stand up and state your name?
Me?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Steve, um. I actually have a comment on the motion, so I'll wait till that.
Does it require an answer?
What? It's just a.
Doesn't change the intent.
No.
Okay. So. Mike?
Oh, I would just like to ask that question again about the.
Okay, about the, yes, yes.
And, and what, what, what was the percentage that, that was determined?
Um.
I mean, is, is it an absolute? Number, or is this, I, I, I just, maybe I, I'm more concerned in general about the regulation.
Right.
It doesn't seem like.
Um, most of the site is remaining exactly the same.
Yeah.
Um, there, uh, so I think it was approximately, um. About a third of the building itself was going to change size, but, um, and, and some work are on the front, but the rest of the site remained the same. In terms of the site work done, less than fifty percent was on there, so we felt as though that it was under the, under the requirement for E V chargers.
Okay, it's just, it seems kind of, uh. Arbitrary, the way we do it, maybe, maybe we need to think about a different way of doing. How, you know, like there's a.
Out what percent?
Yeah, I mean, it, I mean, they're required if. If the overall floor area increases by more than fifty percent, if the number of parking spaces increases by fifty percent. Or if the previous surface area increases by fifty percent.
Yeah.
And none of those.
None of those can do, yeah.
Because it's just a minor.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep.
Much less than fifty percent.
Yes, yep.
Hmm, in fact, less. Because the commercial business would have more parking.
True.
Hmm.
Yeah, correct, that's it, I don't have any other questions, I would like the tree to stay. I think sometimes that can have a calming effect on traffic as much as anything else, when you open it up and people can see, they don't stop. They just blow right through the sign.
And, and, and I, I should mention one other thing too, so, um, the sidewalk in the front, the ten foot sidewalk in the front. Prior to that tree being removed, the sidewalk was actually going to go around the tree and actually head to the, to the northeast. Um, so this is actually more in line with, with normal pedestrian flow. Um, and, and it is, it's, 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 it's a very large tree and, and I did drive by it and I got right there and you really have to creep out, so. I understand the, the comments from both, uh, D O T and D B W because of that, because it, it does make it really challenging. But I do get your point.
Thank you.
Now.
Couple things, uh, the screening, which. This case is point, there's an arrow going to shading which says screening. What is that? I mean, what will the screening be? You said some kind of offense, usually we get some good definition of what that is.
We're closing up, our body says.
No, I mean, for the, I'm sorry, for the mechanical units and the structure, because the mechanically held up on a wood structure.
We go to the building department, we'll show that more clearly, but the intent is to put a fence up.
A fence up down to the roof line?
Yes, so that you cannot see.
The, the, either, either the.
That's on top of the roof.
Okay.
In front of the mechanical equipment.
In front of the mechanical room at, and the, and the structure below it, because you have it up on two by fours right now. Okay, so I just want to get that on the record, that's, that needs to happen.
Complete screen, so that when you're coming down or going up, you're able to see it when you're coming down Laurelwood.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Um, and one that, I guess will be a recurring theme tonight is that. I just was there today and lighting. I don't think there's a single light, uh, exterior light on that building that's compliant right now, in terms of being full cutoffs. They're, they're from the worst to just kind of bad. Uh, and, and they're all different ages apparently too, some are aimed up, some are sideways, most are burnt out and can't tell what's going on. But I don't see any lights on that building that complies. With full cutoff, not a one. And it's both detrimental to the appearance of the building, but certainly doesn't comply with what we're, we're asking for. Uh, up, up on the microphone, please.
Now just come up to the microphone, bring it here.
They're gonna be all updated, all the outside lighting, you talking about on the building itself?
Yes.
It's gonna be all, uh, L E D all.
Full cutoff is our magic word, okay.
And, and, and there, the note on there does reference of that, so the new lighting that is actually, um, and. Maybe Ellen can show them where it is, so there's actually security lighting by the new, um, the building official wanted security lighting specifically by the sidewalk there. Um, and then the three new entrances, there'll be full cutoff lighting above the doors there.
Okay, what's security lighting and why isn't that full cutoff?
Um.
It's only, it's only a luminescence rating, so it doesn't need to aim in your face.
No, no, it was.
Along the sidewalk, so that if there's an emergency and you have to get out of here.
Yes.
There's a fire and you have to come out of here and it's nighttime, there's, there's just low.
Oh.
It, it was ADA, because that's, because of, for ADA compliance.
Okay.
What, um, Tim had asked for was basically some, to, to actually light that pathway in the front there, so they could actually get out of.
If it's an emergency.
Yeah.
People are stumbling and falling, they're going along the sidewalk.
Because it's dark there.
Yes.
Yes, and that's why it's asked for.
I don't know why it's dark, but okay. Okay. But, but never, that's a new one to me.
Um, and we can, I, I should say, we'll, we'll ask for specs for that as part of the tech items.
Yeah, yeah. Um, for the sidewalk that's right, right in front of the building, though I understand. You want to put doors in front and that makes it the front of the building, but we kind of missed the mark a little bit making it the front of the building, because. You can't get from the actual sidewalk to the front of the building right now.
Well, that's why we're adding the sidewalk.
No, I'm saying, if I, if I'm walking down the street on Route one. I have to walk across the grass to get to one of those three apartments.
There's a side, there's a sidewalk here. Yep, there's an existing sidewalk that comes.
Existing sidewalk goes across the front and then bringing a new sidewalk and they don't touch until you get to the parking.
Hmm. You know, if you're coming from the east, from the east to.
Well, at the parking lot, that's true, but it's not from the front of the building. It's actually, there's nothing from the front of the building to the straightforward to the sidewalk, like a normal front of a building would.
If you came down from the east, you gotta go all the way to the west and then back to the east again.
And since our goal to just make it look like the front of the building, which is a good idea. It seems like it should connect to the front of the sidewalk.
This should be sidewalk.
There should be something there that connects it.
Yeah.
And not only left hand side, maybe somewhere. There's nothing there.
There isn't. We can add a little sidewalk.
You're talking, you're talking the west side or the east side?
Middle.
In the middle.
Yeah, make a break in that.
Yes.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, but it's gonna then break that. Screening, isn't it?
That's okay.
That is on the next landscaping proposed in the front.
That's. Having, having, having a six. That doesn't accomplish having a front.
Yeah, if you want to put it back, so it's, I, 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 sorry.
It's only servicing of those three apartments, isn't it, or four apartments? There's three apartments, so if that's the front of the building and those are the doors, you know, so it should go to the sidewalk. Or need to hide it, otherwise it's not the front of the building anymore, it's the side of the building.
Or do it on the, put one in on the east side.
Well, you could, but then it's still not, we're, we're kind of trying to hide the front of the building and we don't want to hide the front of the building. Move one of those, was it Harper Whitey that are on the right hand side of the big tree?
No, those are low growing.
Okay, so you shove one over, it's low growing, so you can still see right through it.
Yep.
So move one over and just put a path there that gets you from the sidewalk straight to the apartment, because we want those people to be able to walk. And not have to go to the parking lot first, if that's the front of the building, as you said.
I think part, I'll, I'll tell you, I think part of the reason when we talked about that, and I totally get your point, so was specifically because of the ADA compliance. Was to connect it there, so I think that that's why it was.
I see the sideways connection, though, but, uh, the fact that it wraps around.
Yeah.
Yeah, somewhere there, and, and I, I'll also question that the fact that. You've got the, the extra sidewalk for the ADA components and it makes it a ninety degree turn around your mechanical unit and then a ninety degree turn again. Why not kind of split the difference so you can have some planting against the building like you have now? Because nobody wants to, nobody's going to do that, they're not going to make a ninety degree turn and then another ninety degree turn. Nobody does that. Well, if they're on a wheelchair, they will, I suppose, right? So you'll block them from doing it, but it's, it's not what they want to do. I guess that's kind of a judgment call, that just to, to dig up everything and have nothing but concrete right up against the front of the building. Is, is an unusual thing, while you'd have a, a planted buffer somewhere. Hiding the foundation for the first six feet and now it's just five feet of concrete. But sure, which is new, before you had planting or at least landscape going up, it's just an awful lot of concrete. It's a lot of concrete, but I, I, I see the predicament and they could come straight out to the sidewalk and still have it handicapping. Sidewalks handicap accessible. So you could just have it come straight out to the sidewalk and, you know, have to walk a little bit further, this is handier, it's not protected.
But.
But, yeah, dude.
Space is here and you want this.
No, I, I understand that.
I don't want to walk out to the street and then.
Yeah, I, I, it's, it's twenty five feet, so it's much more than they should have to do, I, 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 I see the predicament there. But I, I just thought it was strange that you. Before the grass went up to the building. And now it's just concrete for the entire with, almost the entire three fifths of the building in front, including wrapping around. The mechanical areas, and now you're not actually doing much of a job of buffering that mechanical screen right now.
Is there gonna be any?
There's a fence, right?
I understand the fence is there, before there were also some shrubs in front of the fence. And now there's going to be. I understand the fence is there, before there were also some shrubs in front of the fence, and now there's gonna be some three other low shrubs.
And there, and there was also another, um, another system on the other side, so one is actually being removed. So that's why the, you know, the, the planting went back in.
And that's where a door is now, so that's, I understand that, that's fine.
And we don't have arc, we don't have like, those doors, what are they gonna look like? That might make it look like the front of a building.
Yeah.
You know, if there's something around those doors.
I didn't get the, um, I never got the elevations on, at least online, so, but we can, yeah, we can, we have them.
I mean, that might be the way to make it look like the front of the building, if that's what someone wants it to do, but.
I, I thought it'd be curious to take, take the walkway and make it hug the building, the entire length of the building, when there was no need to. Exactly, and that way you've got some, sort of your garden right up against the building and further on the other side of the building.
Just that stretch where there's three doors, we have it there.
Exactly, where you need it.
That's reasonable.
Anything else? You know, one of these, I had a couple of questions on the doors. Where are these doors actually going? Those are existing apartments?
Those are non-existent apartments.
Oh, the, the whole front of the building was part of the martial arts place. Oh, really?
So the new apartments are building, so those will access them.
And these doors will fit into the design of the building?
Yes. We had building thing, we had the floor plans that show these doors.
Yes.
So that goes directly into three. And how many total apartments are on the front? Just three or?
No, there's more, but right now there's a hallway that takes out the existing apartments. It's just renewals that are gonna have access to this front.
So you gotta pay extra to get a front door.
I'll give my. I'm just saying.
Okay. And we'll have good screening against, with a new arrangement, not like what we had fighting before. We had a big problem with that screening on the, on the mechanicals on the front where they snuck them in. Not in accordance with the site plan, right? That's why you still have that one.
Result.
And why, why do we need all these extra parking places? A hundred, right today, there.
During the week.
How many?
All weekends when people have guests.
What, a hundred percent use or just fifty percent?
Well, actually we find that what, the thirty-three is low.
Oh, I don't disagree with that, but.
Low for the tenants, and then when they have company.
You have, you have three parking places per, one, for each apartment.
Yes.
One bedroom.
One and two, some, there's, I mean.
Well, you do have some.
There's four two bedrooms, there's some four two bedrooms and then seventeen one bedrooms, yes.
It just seems like an excess.
We'd have to look at the social demographics. If it is a change.
Absolutely.
It is a change, so it's interesting, I think.
No, if they get used, I don't have a problem if they get used, but I. I don't know if it's a good idea.
Too, we made them tight.
Well, maybe too tight, no, I.
We did that on purpose.
It just seems like an awful lot.
I think I had more problem if none of them existed and they were putting this in.
Oh, yeah.
But now we're talking, saying, do we wanted to take them out? And put in what, an ADU or something? I don't know. There's plenty of green space, it's.
It is interest.
Right, yeah. Yeah, electric bike rack.
There's a bike rocket.
No, that's all I had. Does anyone have any other questions? I guess we. Does anyone have any concerns with the motion?
See.
Did you have a?
I just, uh, let me just call it up. We talk about. Modifications to. Where we say that we, we might change, uh, breakouts to the adjacent properties. But you'd never do it on the east side, right? Cause that's Laurelwood. Right?
So, part of the reason why, yeah, you could question whether it was, whether east or west. So if at some point in the future, a light went on Laurelwood to make it easier for everyone that was there. That was the part of the reasoning before, just leaving the option that if, for some reason, it was needed for traffic circulation and safety. And a new, and a new light, and a new light came there, and again, this is, this is, this is just a placeholder. You know, it's not, it's, they're not, it, it's just a placeholder on, on the, on the plant.
It's just the wording to the adjacent property to the east and or west.
Okay.
It just sounded funny because it's a road, it's not.
Right, right, yeah, true, alright. Um, yeah, cause one of them's, one of them's a driveway on the west side, and then the other side is the street.
Yeah.
Um, I'm happy to change that.
Um, if you can just tweak the wording, just so it doesn't sound like there's another property next door.
Yep.
That you would open up to.
Which one are you talking?
So number one.
One.
Number one.
Yeah.
A connecting driveway from the site to the adjacent property to the east and or west shall be installed.
Why don't you just end that to the adjacent property?
Wasn't there a little sliver property?
Keep it simple.
Oh, I see.
It's a road, so.
Yes, do you want, we can do that to the.
Yeah, to the adjacent property or road, something like that.
Well, should, shall be changed to May? I mean, look, if you wanted to add the driveway, that would be the adjacent property that would pay for it, right?
No. If you're going, yeah, we can, we can change it to May through.
Well, otherwise you're putting a burden, financial burden on the owner here.
Well, that, that was actually the, in the, in the, the last site plan that was actually in there. I was copying the language from there.
Oh.
That was connecting to the, connecting to the west, to that.
To the west.
To the west. And then the thought is that if sometime in the future, a stoplight came on Laurelwood.
Oh, you wanna use that.
It would be a lot easier access for the tenants to be actually able to come to a stoplight and not have to, either to go. You know, to try to go, to try to go east against traffic is, is very dangerous, so.
Yeah. So that, that was the thought. We should just use the word May.
May, that's fine.
It allows them, but it isn't putting a.
Yep.
A financial burden on the.
Hmm, sure. So, see if this helped too, so, um, a connecting driveway from this site to the adjacent property or street now. Is that, or, or road? I just don't wanna confuse it more. I understand what you're trying to say. I was gonna say adjacent property or, or road or street.
Yeah.
Does that work? Okay, or road, okay.
There's some property or road.
Or road, okay. To the east or, and or west, okay.
Yeah, may be installed.
Yeah, maybe installed, yep.
Yeah, it just says it could.
Yeah.
If somebody wants to.
Sure, absolutely.
It's not like a sidewalk where you're.
Right.
You're making it mandatory. Does anyone else have any other concerns with the motion? Or with this. Site plan, okay, and I'll make, make a motion to approve site plan, application twenty-four zero 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 one. Multi-family conversion ten twenty-eight Piquanik Road to convert the remaining. Conversion, commercial space to four one-bedroom apartments, subject to the following conditions. One, if in the future it is determined by the planning and zoning commission to be necessary for the. Improved circulation and safety for this site, a connecting driveway from this site to the. Adjacent property or road to the east and or west may be installed. Two, any modification to this plan imposed by another federal, state, or local agency shall require additional review. By town staff or the commission, whichever is appropriate. Three, technical items raised by staff shall be addressed. Findings, the commission finds that a sidewalk on the west side of Laurel. Road does not exist, there currently exists a five-foot wide sidewalk on the east side of Laurel. Wood Road that addresses pedestrian access and the required frontage sidewalks on the west side may be eliminated. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion on the motion? During none, we'll vote on the motion for the multi-family conversion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions, motion is carried unanimously. More affordable housing.
I didn't hear a four.
How you know?
Any addition of housing.
Be loved.
Make affordable housing.
It's true.
Cause people move out of.
I get what you're saying.
It frees up, yeah, you can freeze up affordable housing somewhere else.
Oh, good.
Well, you get any more. More, okay, and this is, uh, site plan twenty-four zero zero four. Tree Trails, seven fifteen Noank Ledge Road.
Doesn't it feel like deja vu?
Yes.
That's make, that's why there's special permits and separate items, makes it confusing. Probably should have a separate zone. Go from one tree to the another tree, underlight, string lights.
Alright, thank you. Good evening. Fifteen Thane Street, Rotten, Connecticut. Uh, Ellis Farmer, Laurel Engineering Associates, fifteen Thane Street, Rotten, Connecticut, representing Tree Trails Adventures LLC. Seven fifteen Noank Ledge Road. Um, this is specific to the site plan portion, but I'll essentially repeat, um. What are, what I indicated previously, a little bit simplified because we're specific to proposed improvements on the property. Um, again, existing recreation area has been in operation for some time. Uh, the new owners, um, are pursuing permitting, uh, specifically to. Activities that I mentioned, um. The zip line is two towers, uh, made of wood. Uh, limited clearing along the line of the zip line. And I mentioned the parking, I incorrectly stated, uh, that it was gonna be paved, that was a few iterations ago. It is going to be compacted gravel with a specialty mix with a geotextile under it, so it remains very stable. The good news there is that means we're adding zero impervious area to the site, so it's very low impact, so just a clarification there, sorry about that. Um, the parking count to reiterate is one twenty-three, that does include the five handicap spots. We are marking those spots with the proper signage, with parking stops, so they'll be, uh, compliant with Connecticut Building Code. Um, really, there are no other proposed improvements specific to site plan, uh, on the property. As I mentioned previously, um, there are no restrooms proposed. Everything will be porta potties serviced by a private, uh, private entity. No new utilities proposed as part of the project. We are requesting elimination of the requirement for a sidewalk, uh, along the street. And that is in keeping, uh, with the, I'll get the name right. Master bicycle pedestrian and trails plan that recommends sidewalks on the west side of the roadway, we are on the east side of the roadway. Uh, erosion sedimentation controls for the work will be as needed in the area of the zip line. Uh, and of course, those are in accordance with town, town regulations and the Connecticut deep regulations, uh, meaning they're monitored as required. I had mentioned previously, we received, uh, inland wetlands approval in, in January. Um, site lighting is existing site lighting, and it's the string lights that we, uh, referenced. And by way of clarification, I looked at our plans, the string lights are one, uh, each bulb is one watt. Uh, very low, low intensity to letting about a hundred lumens, so again, really nothing that's, that's, that's bright. Um. So really, that's, that's really it for, there's not much going on that way of, of new development, uh, at the, at the site. So happy to answer any questions you may have.
Staff have any?
Just, just a couple of additions. So, so as noted, this is for outdoor recreation in addition to the new facilities that were noted here. The zip line and possibly adjusting some of the ropes courses. It's also to authorize some unauthorized work that took place with the previous owner. Um, there was a shelter, a large shelter built, um, there without any kind of approvals. The lights were installed without any kind of approvals. Again, they are little string lights and they, they follow the ropes course, but. Lighting is approved by this commission and, and that was not approved. There's also a small axe-throwing. Spot on here, uh, outdoor recreation type thing, again, not authorized, but this site plan will authorize it. Um, the, the plan through its notes will allow for adjustments in the ropes course as trees die. Or as, as other environmental issues, um, come up. Um, the lights would also be adjusted along with the ropes course as it, as it moves. Um, the frontage sidewalk was waived under the last two, um, site plan approvals. We don't do waivers anymore, so they are asking for it to be eliminated per your existing regulations for the reasons that were cited. Um, there, and again, there are no facilities on site, Ledge Light has approved that with the porta potties. As, um, as noted, um, as well as, you know, drinking water supplied by bottled water.
Okay. I'll open it up to the commission for any comments or questions or concerns, I'll start with you, Will.
One that's not kind of covered in this, I mentioned it first, was the house.
Yeah.
Old, historic, I don't know what we call it, in front of the site. That's way worse than it's ever been, and now it's noticed it's started to fall apart and it's. In trouble. What are the plans for that? Because that certainly can, that's a hazard, you know, I notice part of it's collapsed. I don't know what the plans are, do you like to address, yeah?
The property owner, that's separate from what we lease, um, and he has been, it's in the queue for historic, um, reclamation. And so whoever is doing that, um, has just been backlog.
So you actually leased the land and that's not part of your lease?
Correct.
So, so it's actually, there've been action there. Now, let me go, I think, Michael have more on part of the lighting, but you submitted a thing with lighting on here, so that's, I'm going to address it. Is that?
Bad day for that.
For the exterior lighting, you've got, I mentioned it's the parking lot lights, these GAs hundred fifty watt. They're not full cutoff, by any means, they can't be made to be full cutoff, they're the wrong fixtures. That they're made to be slanted up, which means you're, you're paying to light the stratosphere, so. Uh, I think as part of this, I don't know if we can get you to remove them or just aim them straight down. But certainly if any adjustment ever happens to these, they cannot be replaced the way they are, I need to get that on the record, because these aren't the wrong fixtures. They've never approved and they can't be approved, they're. I know you're in the woods, but if you get the right kind of fixture, it works that much better. The killing, getting the glare out makes you be able to see better, so that might be where we, we're gonna hear some opinions about the, uh. The string lights that you talk about, these one watt string lights, and the fact that there's thousands of them. If there were twenty of them or fifty of them, like you have over a little dining area, that's kind of charming. Now it's become the character of the whole area. I kinda like the idea of showing off the ropes courses, because it's a wonderful feature for the town. It's, I love the idea, I hear that buses are coming to this, that's terrific, I hope we can handle, the traffic there is against Allen Street, cause I don't know how that's gonna work. But, um, having these things on late at night.
Having these things on late at night, suddenly now the character of the woods is a thousand lights. And the reason we have this. Characteristic built into our standards is so we don't have that. And now we've got it. So I'm going to ask that it cannot be expanded. So whatever string lights you got, I think that's got to be it. And then find some other way of lighting. Any additional would be my proposal. Because we don't want to have more of this. It's kind of nice if it's going to follow the exact rope paths and understand that. That's your, your pattern right now. But I would say judiciously use, so as you're not throwing away what you've already got, they are LEDs. Then I'd, I'd be in favor of just letting you keep what's there, reorganizing them, but not adding to this. Find other ways to light it. Certainly those towers, you're going to need some better light on and these aren't it. Right? I think we're done with these. I'm not quite sure how to regulate it, by the way, because I compared these to this regular string lights you use for Christmas and whatnot. It's about the same wattage. So if those are okay, then these are what, okay, they're what, they're one every three feet or something like that. So the total wattage is. A third of a watt or so per foot. So it's about what you've got on the string of lights. But when you have that many, it starts to become obnoxious. So I would, I'd be in favor of just saying, whatever you got, you get to keep, reorganize them, shift them around, but any new lighting. Find some way to put in some downlights and cutoff lights and it will light your grounds better. It will look better. It will show off the equipment better. See anything else? And then I think that's I've got. Oh, by the way, I'll give you a little technical. So these, these lights that you've got. It's right on here that you've got the color of them. Says warm white, which is twenty two hundred K. It's nice warm candlelight white. And then you've got five thousand K street lights. Which is this blue white glaring thing that the town doesn't even use. They use something much nicer. So that's another reason not to replace those or use those ever again. Get something that goes with. Looking good in the woods. So I've got.
Mike?
Oh, I guess my issue is with the lights as well, but I don't have the expertise that has. Are these, what is it, what we see here? This is what is existing now?
Yes, that's what's, yes.
And they were. See, I guess it's when you get a lot of these string lights and I, and I was. Me, asking about it for, oh, oh, more than two years, I think. Like periodically, because they would be on at four o'clock in the morning. You go down the highway and it looked like. South of the border, that place, you know. I mean, it really wasn't, for me, it wasn't a threat.
All lights will be off regardless at eleven PM.
And then how do we know, like if we were to say that. You know, you can keep what you have. How do we know? How many there are? I mean, that's what it amounts to is that. A few of these lights, a few strings here and there, it doesn't create. Situation for me. But when there's thousands of them, it, you know, it starts to be a distraction when you're going down the highway and all of a sudden this place is. Lit up like a carnival.
Yeah, at this time, the, the addition of lighting is, is not proposed. So it's essentially getting approval for what's there today.
Do you know how many lights are there?
Ellis, do we know, we have not counted the individual string lights. Parking lot lights or the, the, the freestanding? Okay, one, a single post. We have not counted the actual number of bulbs on the string lights.
Yeah, and then the hours that those lights are on, I would like to see limited to.
Yep, they'll all be put on electronic timers, so they will automatically shut off at eleven o'clock.
Good.
Is that part of the technical items?
That's actually part, part of their application that they're on timers.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I guess I just, you know, I'll, I'll wait to hear what other people think. I don't know if eleven is a reasonable hour, but maybe out there it's okay, but it's just. Seems. I'll, I'll wait to hear what other people think.
So. That's me. It's, thanks. On the lighting. You know, some things have changed in your, people that are about your property, I guess even since this. Survey was done here. So you really have the town of Groton on the southern side now, as you probably know, and it's actually. Preserved open space, supported by the state of Connecticut DEP grant. And it's a big property, I think it's about a hundred and sixty acres of it. So my comment would be, one thing you don't want is lighting that's going all over the place. You want, I think as little as possible and to be specifically targeted for what you're trying to achieve, not, you know, going out or anything. Preferably. You would really try to limit it and I understand it's going to be a fine balance. I don't understand the string lights, how bright they are. I just don't. Are they LEDs?
Uh, they're, yeah, they're, they're one hundred lumens and I know that's sort of. What does that mean? They're actually not very bright. Again, they're one, one watt. One hundred lumens. I would characterize them more as accent lighting and not akin to.
Task lighting.
Lighting that, yeah, that, that would provide you. Yeah, task lighting. They're, they're more of aesthetic lighting, I guess I would characterize it as.
Not when you have hundreds of, so that's, that's it there. So you're right, you're a hundred lumens and every eight is eighty lumens. And that gets to be like a sixty watt bulb. So you've got a lot of them.
Right, and that's why I would agree with. Basically keeping the numbers of those as they are. And I also have a problem with the lights off at eleven. I think that's a kind of unusual time. Usually we, we go with a ten o'clock, I think. And that you do have neighbors here. These woods are pretty open, actually. So I would think what we want, if it's possible, you know, I would recommend going to a ten o'clock cutoff.
Facility closes, please break remember wrong, at ten, ten PM. Uh, the eleven o'clock was chosen to, to basically give a shutdown time period. Is that one hour?
They're usually off well before eleven. And since I took over two years ago, I will guarantee you never see the light on after eleven.
No, I'm, I, they were, I mean, I'm, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't really, I don't go that way a lot at four AM, but.
Yeah, I'd really recommend ten o'clock. I mean, we've done that for a lot, kind of a consistent thing. For noise, for lights, for taking it at peace. People have a reasonable expectation. They're going to be able to go to sleep sometime around.
Are there still patrons there at, say, nine fifty nine wrapping up when you shut down at ten?
They're still up in birthday parties. They will be there until ten thirty and we're pushing them on out the door. So, yes, they, they are there after ten. They're out of the trees or they leave the tree by ten. And as they leave the trees, then those corresponding lights are shut down.
Are, are there other kinds of, like if you use those rope lights that would. Make less.
They're the same.
Where? But they're not, oh, are there other kind of rope? Like the rope lights is, I mean, I guess we're, you're trying to, uh, safety, right? So that people can find their way along these things.
But still maintain a, a natural feel, not to have obnoxious lighting.
Those rope lights end up adding up to almost about the same.
It's just these spots of, okay.
Yeah. Now you're thinking this thing, if it looks more like neon because it's continuous, it's still pretty obnoxious.
So I would recommend ten o'clock. Light cutoff.
Anything else?
That's it.
Steve?
Split the difference, ten thirty. I understand that you still have people there. You don't want it to go pitch dark.
Right, in the woods.
You know, when have these people try to stumble out.
And you gotta have people go through the area too.
Right. Look like a high school tiger. So.
Can we agree on ten thirty?
Like one of your folks wants to address the commission?
Mark?
Andy, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna, he's, he's part.
Oh, yeah, Mark, okay.
Right, part of this team, so I'm just going to go ahead and let him talk. Maybe. There we are.
There's Andy.
Okay, you should be able to speak.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so thanks for this opportunity. Our business, you know, in order.
State your name and address.
Sorry, Andy Worthington, Tree Trails Adventures, or Tree Trails LLC. Our business closes at ten. Um, the courses shut down at ten. People get out of the trees. But this is really a safety issue for us. And, and I can address both rope lighting, the string lighting and downward lighting. And industry standard is. The, the string lights. Because it is unsafe for us to have any sort of bright light up there. Because our guests have to look where they're going. So any sort of flood or spot would prevent them from. You know, being able to see exactly where it is they're going. These low wattage string lights illuminate enough of the course. That it's safe without creating a lot of extra light or any sort of glare or spot that would blind any of our guests. As they were moving along the courses. You'll see them all around. We had a, we had a course in Nebraska that was in a wildlife sanctuary. With string lights and it did not affect any of the, any of the wildlife in the sanctuary. There's, there are no neighbors anywhere nearby to, to see this. These lights really don't travel. I recognize you can see them if you're looking through the trees from ninety five. But there's really no other spot besides traveling on ninety five where you can see these lights. And what you're telling us if we can't add additional lights is that we can't expand the business at all. Because there's, there's really no other way to light this except through the strings.
You do have a row of houses right down knowing ledged road.
But you, we also need to remember how far off the road those, the lights start. I mean, there's, there is a good patch of trees that will never be lit.
Well, where's that patch of trees? It's a very flat land right there, so.
Yep, which is, yeah, and that land is owned by our landlord.
Well, I'm talking about the land south of where the houses are.
If you look at, if you look at the plan. There, there's nothing proposed. To the. To the right side towards no ank ledgered of the zip line.
Zip line's right there.
Zip line's there and there's nothing, that's all trees where your hand was.
Yeah, because that's.
The course goes on the other side and any expansion would occur on that side. It, and if, if you're familiar with the topography of that site as well, it, it, it. It is, it goes away from, it goes down from the road. It's a lower elevation as you get deeper into the property. And by road, I mean ninety five. So the, the, it gets less and less visible as you go deeper into the property into that expansion area.
Well, I guess I beg to differ with you on that. I have the topple lines here. It doesn't look that way to me. And you do have a whole housing development right next to I nine five to the west there too. But those areas in there, they tend to be very large, mature trees and it is. Pretty open. Anyway.
This is the only time, can I, can I ask, right now, there's a lot of, we've got between the ropes courses themselves and. Parking lot and everywhere else. You also have. Paths and bridges and other connecting areas. Are they right now also lit with these rope lights?
No.
There's no light except for just alongside the actual rope courses?
The, the paths tend to follow the ropes courses.
I guess we'd have to get down to the details then as to what string lights there are. Because if that's so, you say they, they meet it, but it also means they have to get from the parking lot to the ropes courses. There are ropes course right along everything? Because it seems like there should be some gaps. And you're saying there's just no lighting on any of the gaps? It's just lit by the ambient light between ropes courses?
Clay, do you want to, do you want to comment on that?
Definitely. So as you enter the property from the parking lot, there are practice courses where guests practice on the ground, which are illuminated there. So those practice courses, there's four of them over here and one of them there. We do have, there is a little bit of lighting around our harnessing mats. It isn't. Directly adjacent to those practice forces or the courses themselves. And that's probably the lighting that you're thinking about. That is around the harnessing mats and that should be a container where that happens.
Okay, I'm trying to think of other, other opportunities. Where it's not right in the ropes course, which as you say, might be the only way to go because you're going to be moving it whenever it wears out or something like that. The, but where it's on the ground or where it's other uses. That's not the kind of lighting that should be there. You should be taking those ropes and reemploying them. At someplace new. So I'm wondering how much you might actually be able to expand. Before you'd have to come back to us and say, okay, now I need some more lights. Because the only place you should have it, from what I'm hearing from you, is where people are actually up on the ropes. And that's just seems to be the only, the industry standard and the best you can do. Is that everywhere else?
Best we can do.
Sorry, Andy, we didn't hear that.
I said it is the best, the, the string lights are the best we can do until we can figure out, you know, until the industry comes up with something better, which I'm not sure they will. These are absolutely the lowest impact lights that you can have.
Well. You could actually have a little lower if they had shades on them, but I'm, I'm looking for a product that apparently there isn't right now.
Correct.
So when you say industry standards, what, what standard is that?
Well. The, the American, the Association for Challenge Course Technology is the industry organization. And there. It is just the, it's the lights that everybody uses. It is. It's, it's the only, it's the only lighting. We've built many of these courses throughout the country and it's always this type of lighting. Other courses I visited that we don't have any association with are also lit with these lights. In fact, I've never seen anything else other than string lights on ropes courses, just because. It is so low impact compared to all the other alternatives. And it doesn't affect the safety of the climbers because there's no, there's no bright spots anywhere on the course.
No glare. Even on the towers.
Can't, can we limit the conversation just one person? I thought Steve was.
Yeah, and, and spun out of control.
We'll bring down their control.
I personally, it's a permitted use. I mean, we just approved the special permit. They have to adequately light the place. I don't think we can tie their hands and say. Sure, expand, but don't put any lights on it. That's, that seems illogical. So let them do what they've been doing. Put a reasonable limit on the time that they're going to be operating and be done with.
Anything else?
No.
I still turned on. I, I listened to the, to the beginning of the conversation where you're talking about the, the public outdoor recreation lighting. And, you know, I heard eleven o'clock there. Certainly, you know, we'll do a best effort to get the lights off before eleven o'clock. And Clay, I think has done an admirable job of doing that because we recognized. When we acquired the course, these lights were not permitted and, you know, that's why we've taken these steps to get them permitted. So we'll continue to do all we can to get people out of there as soon as possible. But I think eleven o'clock is reasonable from a safety standpoint, recognizing that we get people out of the trees at ten o'clock. And that we're going to try and get them out of the park safely as quickly as possible after that. So I'd ask for your indulgence on that. So I'd ask for your indulgence on that, on that spec to allow us eleven o'clock in the, on the occasions where we can't get them out of the park and shut everything down by ten thirty, which has certainly been our, our best efforts uh, since we've acquired the course.
Kevin, did you have anything?
So, so I did. So um, it's a different use than we've had, we've had in the town, right? So-
Well, it's been an ongoing.
For this particular property, but we have no other uses like this in, in the town, right? So it, it is unique, you know, in, in many ways. I think we'd love to be able to say there's alternatives to lighting. Um, or in these type of applications for lighting, we've had lighting specialists come in and basically tell us what their approach is, right? Um, while you may quote industry standards, a lot of us who are involved in standard bodies fully realize there's not an industry standard. It's a group that builds these, that, you know, provides direction, not truly an industry standard, I'll say. Um, but I think I side with Steve in that, you know, if we've looked at the site plan and we say, good, um, we have to give the ability for people to be successful at the business in this way without stepping over boundaries and ability to put additional lighting where the, the zip lines go or the path goes seems appropriate to me. So that's all to share.
Okay. All right, yeah, I just, I think when we look at it, you have to have the ability to sweep the, the area. So you need those, you have to have the lights on until that's done. It's like ski area.
Absolutely.
You gotta sweep all the trails, right?
Yeah.
Cuz you don't wanna leave somebody there and end up in the real bad situations. And really, we're just approving, I guess, what exists today.
Yep.
And they should have the ability to move the existing strings somewhere else. And I've never heard of any neighbors complaints and has the staff ever received any complaints from neighbors of these?
From neighbors, no, um, just from various commissioners. And it's not just you, Michael, it's not.
No, because it was neighborhood comment.
I think it was mostly- Like you see, you see him on ninety-five because you're right next to him. But there's a lot of open space where there's no, no residences and buildings around it there. So I, I don't know, I could drive by tonight and see what's there.
It's just, I think for me, it was that, there was never, for years, I mean, no response. We would say something, nothing. And, and, and for me right now, we don't allow open bulbs anywhere in town. Any wattage. We don't know the number that are there now. We don't know how many are anticipated.
Well-
Blank check.
Well, you're saying, well, you measure the feet, I guess.
Well, that's what, I would like this be some way to be able to say, this is what we can put up with.
So many feet.
This many lights.
Don't count the lights.
Open bulbs like that just aren't-
Provide a metric.
A standard.
Give me a metric where we are now.
I don't know, it's nothing that I-
I think that would be appropriate within, right?
I don't, I just- And maybe it's just a part of limitation is that if, if in fact, as you say, so many watts of string per so much length of rope course, they can feed us that and that'll be fine. And therefore, if you expand the rope course, maybe you get to have that much more light until some other technology happens.
Yeah.
However, that only goes for the actual physical ropes course for other uses, as we just mentioned. It has no place there. It's not even to their benefit to use them there. It's just what they had.
Yeah.
Yeah, so some of those should go away and for some other of the connective tissue of the paths and things like that, they'd do better off to have different lighting at those locations. It seems like for the rope course at this time, that's the best that we've got. Yeah, so you could expand. I would agree with that. But just for the- Yeah, I think that's reasonable. Not for any of the connect- Where the rope courses are, you could have these bulbs. You don't need them in other places, paths and like-
Or you have so many feet, maybe-
Yeah, well, that's it. Just, you know, maybe that could be a technical item is to determine the number of feet that currently exist and that's the number that's-
The number that's allowed.
Allowed and then you can move them.
We're approving tonight.
Yeah.
And if you wanna expand, cuz there's no way you're gonna count a thousand light bulbs.
No, they're, they're by, they're by string. They, they probably even know what their strings are, but that, that's not the issue. But I think what we're saying is, the only technology they know, they know of or that anybody else knows of is these strings for the actual rope courses. Not for walkways, not for parking lots, not for containers, not for anything else. That's not where they go. But for the ropes course themselves, for the safety of the people on the courses, that seems to be the way to go.
Yeah, cuz you have to have the rope, yeah, right.
And so maybe we're, we're approving that, yes, you can do that, but the exclusion of doing it elsewhere. They'll be able to see the paths better with better lights.
Is there a lighting plan associated with this?
Nope, not.
Um, there are details of the lights that are out there, um, along with notes saying where those lights are.
So we haven't?
There's no, Clay.
Right, yeah.
But we have a description of-
That there's a description and there's a detail of what the lights are.
So we can approve what we have today and it's recorded somewhere. Which is, I think is what we're saying. And I think the eleven o'clock time is realistic to give them time. Time to sweep their area, cuz you don't want, from a safety standpoint, you don't wanna have a lost kid there. Get in trouble.
Seems like a kid you may wanna lose. I was just saying, I've seen something you may wanna lose.
Parking, parking wise, do you ever have a problem if you eliminate or restricting access to uh, or to the site using a parking so that we don't park on the street?
Do you mean if there's events?
Well, cuz we don't, we really don't have anything to say how many parking places we need.
Yep, it is, it is used, um, to my knowledge, please correct me wrong, there's never been a situation where people have had to park on, on the street. To date, the parking has been adequate for, for the use. We don't really anticipate the use going that high, that we'd end up with people out of the street. Because at that point, it would actually exceed the capacity of the facility itself.
Well, that's what I-
They would have to just turn people away.
Can that be some way to restrict the access to the, to the site if, if you exceed, you know, parking?
Yeah, I'm sure that cones could be put up, similar to what we see at some of the parks, park full, those kinds of things. Yeah.
You make reservations?
Or, yeah, because, yeah, cuz we don't, I think the zoning official just arbitrarily picked a golf course and that's not realistic for something like this.
And because of the reservation system, it allows them to anticipate.
Oh, so you do have a reservation system.
Yes.
Oh, so you can, you really do control.
Yep, yep, it's definitely not random. Yeah, so they could actually theoretically, if they knew they were at capacity, they could say, we have no more slots.
And, and in fact, we do that now.
At your current business practice. Now, okay. That's probably not where you can hit.
Right, and that's why the golf, that, that's why the golf course analogy is, is fair, is a fairly accurate one. As they have to take tee times cuz they only allow so many people on the course. We take reservations times cuz we only have so many harnesses and so many elements that people could climb on. So, so it's very restrictive in terms of the, the number of people that could be on the course at any given time.
So you do control it based on?
Yes, absolutely.
So then the number of parking face, spaces is realistic.
Yes, it is.
Oh, good. I don't have anything else. Does anybody else have anything? So is there any problem that people have with the proposed motion?
Can I, I asked for a clarification on where you landed on the lights? So it's just on the ropes courses and nowhere else for the string lights? And if the ropes courses move or expand, the string lights can be added?
All right, all right, and we will address that with a note.
Can we do it as a technical?
Absolutely, we will, yeah, we're gonna make that clear on the plan.
Hmm.
Okay. Yeah.
It would be good if eventually we can get, I don't know if it's on the plan, how many linear feet?
It, it's not.
No.
Is that a realistic figure to come up with or is it?
I, I think it would be a difficult figure to come up, well, I mean, you can do anything. I think it would take, you know, a surveyor a good amount of time to actually go out and, and survey. I, exactly, I'm not sure what that-
I don't wanna count light.
Right.
Gives you a metric.
Right.
But-
But if you're going to allow-
Ride is a metric, right?
Yeah. Okay.
You could get an approximate, I think, by looking at the plan if they're outlined where they go.
But if the control is the-
Well, you may not know it accurately.
Yep, exactly.
Yeah, okay. All right, so I'll make a, I guess nobody else has any problems with, with the motion. I'll make a motion to approve S I T twenty-four zero 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 four. Tree Trails seven fifteen No Ankle Ledyard Road to expand the outdoor recreation facility with the following modification. One, site plan approval will be required for any additional activities not shown or noted on the approved plan. Two, all technical items raised by staff shall be addressed. Findings, the commission finds that the requirement for a frontage sidewalk should be eliminated as the sidewalk is not recommended by the master bicycle pedestrian trails plan. And there will be no significant pedestrian movement through the site. Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved in second and any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, will vote on the motion. All those in favor of say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously, so. And we will sail on to the next item. I couldn't resist that. So next item is S I T twenty-four zero zero two, U S S Grotten Sail Zero, Newtown Road. Nelson?
Yeah, that looks good.
Yep. All right. Uh, good evening, everyone, again. Chad Frost with Kemp Frost, thanks for architecture. Happy to be here this time tonight representing the USS Grotten Monument. Uh, and we have some of the board members with me. Uh, I will try to be brief. You guys have seen this before. Uh, when we were here for the variance, for the setback because of the front yard issue, uh, which we received. And so now tonight, we're here for the, the site plan application. Um, figured I'd start by showing you just, uh, again, the rendering that we're proposed to do. Just as reference, the, the frontage, what was the excess right of way along um, one seventeen there in front of the library, in front of the Thrive fifty-five. Uh, remove a few trees and put in, uh, the USS Grotten Sail and Rudder, create an earthen berm the size of the submarine and create a monument uh, to the men and women who design, build, operate and maintain submarines. Uh, and, and celebration of both the submarine industry and how Grotten has participated in that. Uh, this is a few of the renderings that we've produced for, just to give you another idea um, of, of how it hopefully will look. It is a black granite retaining wall. It's not retaining a ton, but it's freestanding on both sides with a slight retainage of the berm with interpretive signage on the inside. The sail is set up on top of a four, or a four foot plinth of concrete to make it appropriate for the size of the berm, cuz the berm is four feet tall and the sail sitting on top of that realistically. Then as we go down the center, uh, we have the walkway that goes down the center of the berm. Again, this is intentional so that it feels like you are a little bit inside of the submarine. You're down within the space, even though you're walking at grade, but the berm is built up around you. We have some metal walls to either side with interpretive signage that runs down them. We have LED light strips in basically what is the toe kick of that wall so that we get illumination about six inches from the ground that spills out into the walkway and then gently illuminates the undersides of the trees that go down the walkway. Uh, and that is the section of what that walkway looks like. And again, kind of an aerial view uh, of what we hope will all look like when we're complete. Um, I'll run through the plans relatively quickly. Not even gonna focus on all of our construction detail notes. This is the existing survey. The survey was done by Bobby Beeman uh, for the Public Works because this is both a quasi-public and uh, private partnership to do it. The, the town took care of the survey. This is our erosion control sedimentation plan. Um, again, not a huge area. We have a construction fence. We have sedimentation erosion control fencing. We have all the catch basins noted to be sacked. We have the construction access and, and all those sort of typical construction details. Uh, our S and E details. Demolition, uh, fairly simple strip and stockpile the topsoil. We have a, a handful of trees that are along the area that do come down and get replaced with the ornamental trees down the length of the submarine. We have a little bit of demo in the driveway where we're putting in a raised pedestrian crossing. Uh, and then around the existing uh, tree on the other island that has new flagpoles we're connecting with a, a concrete walk. From a site improvements perspective, um, I'll start just on the outside. So this is the end of the existing sidewalk on the existing parking lot. We're proposing to wrap it around this existing tree and island. These are the existing flagpoles that are out there. So we connect this walkway, which connects to existing memorials, come across that raised island, uh, or it's not really an island, raised plinth, the pedestrian crossing. This meets the new standard for the district. That connects as a walkway directly into the main plaza space. This is that, that granite wall that starts low and works its way up. The idea is that's kind of the bow wave as a submarine's going through the water. Uh, but it per, per um, ends up creating some privacy within the inside, uh, separating the noise uh, of the road on the outside. And is suitable, this is about fifty-five feet in diameter so they can have some changing the guard events and some things like that within this while electric can be set up underneath the sail, uh, using the whole letter as, or the whole sail as a backdrop. And we have noted that there could be signage on the outside of this wall just indicating the monument and what it is. So it could be the USS Grotten identification sign. We've indicated the amount of square footage allowable for that. Uh, the center spine walkway, the berm, the trees, uh, the small plaza around the, what we're calling the family garden and around the rudder. And then the connection back to the library. This is where we're celebrating in connection to uh, the town of Grotten with some interpretive signage on this side and the memorial, or not memorial, excuse me, the donor wall uh, on the left side as you're walking out. I'll note that uh, we have added two ADA parking spaces within the existing parking area. So we, we lose a total of one space. Uh, but we did that. There are quite a few existing ADA spaces out there, but they're really relative to both the library and uh, Thrive fifty-five. And so these are specific to be able to get people uh, directly into the monument as close as possible. Um, I will note, we did discuss with staff, we don't have uh, trashcans or bike racks specific to this project, direct, located right within it. Uh, because there are those at both front entrances of the two buildings. Some more details, the, the sections and elevations of, of what we expect it to look like. This, you might, this has got some of the dimensions on it. You can get the scale of the people, the wall's about six feet high at its highest. On the inside, the berm is four feet tall. Uh, the other side of the Fairwater Plain is twelve feet from the grade. And then you can see we're about twenty and a half feet tall uh, to the sail. And that's the entire length as it should look alongside the road. Uh, a couple other minor details, as we have that wall that is the, the metal wall down the walkway, it will transition from four feet high down to about two feet high as the profile of the slug is, is going down towards the rudder end. Grading wise, um, one thing that worked out great here is this, this was requested to put in that uh, raised crosswalk and it turns out that we did it right at the high point of the driveway. So from a, a grading perspective, it was great cuz we can get water to flow away from both sides. I feel like that never happens. But that was great. So grading wise, all that works out. We have a nice, easy one and a half percent coming into the plaza. The plaza's graded- But that was great. So grading wise, all, all that works out. We have a nice, easy one and a half percent coming into the plaza. The plaza is graded at one and a half all the way across the site. Uh, that's basically the natural slope of the lawn there. It's grown from the parking lot out towards the road. And so then what we do is we do put in a, a trench drain along this curve. This is the low point on the inside. To collect any stormwater coming across this, and it gets piped down the way. The walkway is effectively flat. Uh, we are draining that by putting in permeable pavement and allowing an under drain to go down the center of it. So that any rain that falls within that walkway permeates through and gets into a pipe if necessary. Those pipes come down and then connect through here and out to the existing stormwater, uh, system that goes into the library. I will note, we are putting a new yard drain in, in this location. And that's effectively because now the submarine has created a giant dam. Uh, for any surface water that would flow naturally, uh, to the road, it will now get blocked, so it'll come down to a new little point and go into that drain. Uh, and likewise, all the water from the library, there's a, a gentle pitch. Of about one and a half to one point two percent across this area. And we have a little scupper drain in the wall down here, so that it can just naturally drain right through. Um, but essentially, pretty simple. You can see the contour shapes. Of the outline of the submarine. Planting plan, also, uh, simple in the fact that there's not a lot of plants, so we, we very intentionally have large mass plantings. This is the grass that's gonna be the entire. Uh, earthen berm is cecalaria, which is a small ornamental grass that grows to about two feet tall. It is mostly evergreen, so that it's not one of those grasses that dies to complete brown and goes all the way to the ground dead every year. It'll stay mostly green throughout the winter. Needs a little bit of a haircut in the spring, and then it comes right back out again. Uh, and we did that so that there is some wave and some movement, but also we wanted that mass planting, so that you really kind of. Accentuate the size and really show off how big a submarine is, um. Down the entire mass. We have the ornamental trees. These are, uh, eastern red buds, if I recall. Uh, again, small ornamental trees that will be flowering, great effect, uh, meant to be kind of walking down the L A as you're going down the center of the submarine. Uh, and then some additional grasses and shrubs just at the end, uh, for enclosure. There are some existing. Um. There was, I should say, kind of a lifting butterfly garden, they called it, that's out there. It's a little berm. There's about three shrubs left in it, and the rest of it is a few bulbs. Um, so we're removing that or moving that over to a different area and kind of putting the memorial stones along with that. Uh, there is some existing sculpture and an existing bike rack that remain out there in that location. Lighting. Um, since that's been a topic to me. Uh, we did spend quite a bit of time here, uh, studying the lighting, trying to get it just right. This is a monument of, of both local, statewide, and national significance. And so we really want to light it appropriately, um, for those reasons. And so the way we've, we've chosen to light that. Is with some uplights around the sail itself, so these are ingrade lights that are washing up the side of the sail. Then on top of the fair water planes, uh, we have a few L E D light strips to light the area of the sail that's above the fire, the fair water planes. I can see that, right? So that lights, uh, the sail. The L E D light strips that I mentioned running down the length of the walkway at the kick, at the toe kick area. And then down on the rudder, uh, we have four ingrade fixtures as well. Um, we have this, we did a full mockup of the lights out at the USS Washington at the Nautilus. Um, and I'll talk about that in a second, but what I want to show you first is. Some of the studies that we went through, looking at the lighting of this, just so you can kind of get the process. Uh, we built a full three D model and then illuminated it a bunch of different ways. Uh, this is one of the first iterations looking at it. What we didn't like about this. Is you can see the clearly the shadow, right? If we don't put any light on the top of that fair water plane. You get a very stark hot cold shadow happening. We have a whole lot of light hitting the bottom, not a whole lot of light getting to the top, and none getting over. Uh, the fair water planes, and you can kind of see what that might look like in this instance. And I'll note on all of these, this leading edge. Isn't represented correctly, right? It's just a modeling error. There's basically a dent in the front as opposed to. Uh, that, which is why it shows up, uh, in those that way. Another study, so this one, we played with the lighting spread. We moved the lighting up. We tried to get, what we were looking for is trying to get an even wash of light across the entire thing, so that. We're pa- fairly even across. And it shows a little bit better in this instance, where you can kind of see a better evenly washed lit, um, from top to bottom. Again, not liking the shadow because of. When you're coming down the road and looking at this as you're coming at, we want to really highlight the sails. And to do that, you need to be able to have some light above that. So this next study kind of begins to show that. Uh, this is when we add the L E D light strips on top of the fair water plane. In this instance, you can see how hot that looks. We have way too much light hitting right above it. And especially with the cold next to it from the lights not reaching all the way up. That was what it kind of looks like. As we got closer. This is, we then toned this down, we spread out this light. Um, so that we could get a more even wash of light across it. And that's about as far as we took the modeling. We could know we could get pretty close. We knew what type of lights, we knew this. The beam patterns and the spreads and things like that. And then that's when we went out to the Washington. Um, oh, I'll note, this was what was in the model. So this is a whole lot of light. What we found when we went to the Washington is that these were initially in the model at three foot six on center. Which is a lot of light. We ended up with about half of that. Uh, because when we went out there, it was just too much light, lighting it up. Oh, and I, yeah, so. These are the actual images, photographs that we took while we were out there doing the mockup. Um, this represents basically two lights on the underside and one part of the L E D strip on the upside, on the upper side of the fair water plane. So, as you can see, kind of in this image here. The lights washing fairly even top to bottom, and then when we do add that little L E D strip up here, it helps to illuminate the top part of the, the sail. Just as much as the floodlights do to either side, and we can see the underside of that fair water plane really well. The effect we're looking for is, as I mentioned, we want to see the underside lit, the sides lit, the top lit. And then that leading top edge of this, of the fair water plane will be dark. Right? So you get that contrast and really be able to see that wing sticking out the sides. Um, we are showing it in a variety of different colors, because these lights are color changeable. They are programmable. Uh, we don't intend to use them. Like a disco ball, um, you know, we want to do it pretty respectfully, but there could be times when. At holidays, it might be a particular color or something like that, like some of the bridges and things like that, that do tend to do that. It will not be like color-changing rotation. All night long. So most of the time, it'll be a soft white. Uh, chosen, it is a difficult thing to light a black, a flat black. Piece of metal at night. So, um. We do have all the controls built into this to be able to play with both the, the brightness, um, and the aiming and the, um. The direction of the light, so that we can adjust it once we get it in there, and then it is, uh, fully programmable. Back into the senior center or Thrive fifty-five. Uh, there'll be a, a relay there to be able to control it reasonably as well. Um. So that's, that's effectively the lighting from where we ended on that. Uh, a bunch of the de- construction details from the concrete to the signage to the ADA details. These are some of the, the, the cross-section of that larger granite retaining wall, so it will be a concrete core, and it'll have granite, uh, cladding all the sides. Some of the details for the, the steel walls, uh, the raised pedestrian crossing. Some of those details. Here's a little bit more of the lighting. So the actual ingrade fixture, this is shown with all the lights in there at different colors, just so you can see the fixtures. The linear walkway, the light down at the, the bottom of the walk. Some of our connectors, um. The vaults that we typically use, there's, there's, these are actually manufactured in Connecticut. It's one of the best in the country. Uh, and then the L E D strips. This is that toe kick at the bottom of the walkway, so we have our steel edge coming down, the details and how the L E D light strip. Fits into it. I think that's effectively it. There's our planting details. Uh, and then back to a pretty picture, so. Uh, other things what am I supposed to cover? Let's see. From a lighting perspective, I will point out, we did put in our response back that. Um, there is light that is shaming upwards, right? We have ingrade light fixtures that are up, and they are angled in towards the sail itself. We feel that's permissible under your section eight point five dash three point B. Which allows for lighting for security aesthetics and display, and we think this meets all three of those. Uh, we intend to leave these lights on all night long, because this is a monument of national significance, and so in the other monument. Again, Fort Griswold, you leave those lights on all the time. Um. And that's both for the security, so that we know what's going on. We don't have anybody defacing it in the middle of the night, but also for the aesthetics and for the display of the monument itself. Um. Check my notes, see what else we had. This is our lighting. Crosswalks, um, sidewalks. So the frontage sidewalk, let me go back to a sec. Um. We are taking the stance. There, the last time when Thrive was approved. There is a sidewalk that comes down the frontage, but setback, not quite out on the road because of how wide that frontage strip was. It comes along through here. Comes up to the library and then continues along the drive. All the way through here, crosses the street, and then comes back out, and that's the end of the frontage sidewalk. We're proposing that that should be the remaining frontage sidewalk at the end of this project and not have to put in a whole nother frontage sidewalk, so that we have. Effectively, at some point, three parallel sidewalks, all about fifteen feet apart, uh, apart. Um, and if anything, we want to encourage the public, if they are walking back and forth here, to be able to come up through here and walk in and through the monument, as opposed to just walking right by it on the road. Uh, a few feet away. Um, and I do have some notes about, uh, the Bicycle Trail Pedestrian Master Plan. Uh, that we did help author many, many years ago, uh, and what's required here, and there are some bike lanes that are required at some point. That's part of a larger state project on, obviously, a state road. Um, and then there's the idea that there could be a multi-use path somewhere in this vicinity that connects up to cop property and down to Bluff Point. Uh. There is still room a lot in the frontage, if that was to happen at some point. Between the curb and where the monument is, that still could go in, but we don't think it's appropriate to put it in now for this short little section of, of the project, until we know for sure that where the trail needs to go in the future. Um, parking, um, our, our stance is at this point that there is sufficient onsite parking. Now, again, one of the reasons this location was chosen for this. Was because of the abundance of parking that's already there by the library and Thrive fifty-five. Uh, any average day, we think that parking's about fifty percent used on a normal day for both, uh, areas. We think the average daily traffic for this monument will be less than ten people a day. Uh, so that's not a lot of parking impact to the, to existing spaces that are out there. Um, the monument will be used for some small ceremonies, so if you have thirty. To fifty people during a, a ceremony, that's, you know, maybe fifteen to twenty cars. Uh, which is not an impact. Right now, there's two hundred and thirty-eight spaces, right? So that's not a very significant number. And then what we have put in there is that if, if there's any larger ceremonies, it's part of a, a Fourth of July or Memorial Day or something like that. That will be coordinated with both Thrive fifty-five and the library. Through the rec department to be able to make sure that if there's any other events happening onsite, that all of those are coordinated together from a parking perspective. Um, with that, the only other thing I would say is that the intent of this is the committee is raising all the money. Uh, they, they raised the money to give the, the land, they purchased the land, uh, A. And then they're raising the money to be able to build and construct this when they are done. They will be gifting it back over to the town. The town will take over. Maintenance requirements of the soft scape. And then right now, the Heritage and History Command of the Navy is going to be taking ownership of the, the metal artifacts, right? So both the sail and rudder. Become part of history and heritage command for future maintenance of those artifacts, and the town maintains the landscape basically. So, if that any. Questions, I'm happy to answer.
Staff of the report.
Sure, and, and truthfully, I don't have to say much, because Chad's presentation covered really everything, um, but just a couple other things that, um. Uh, just to touch base on, so, um. The, the, the pro- proposal, the proposed monument, um, within the M V C meets the design standards of creative placemaking. Um, the site, you'll notice that the site's actually at two locations, mostly at Zero Newtown Road, but also fifty-two, because it takes up a little of the section of the. Of, of the library itself. Um, as was mentioned, this is, there really is sufficient parking at the library and, uh, and at Thrive, and that there are two new ADA compliant van and car parking spaces, because. Of the thought that there may be some veterans that would need access there directly next to it, um. Chad talked a little bit about the sidewalks. Yes, there is an existing sidewalk ru- running along the east side of Thrive and, and the library. Um, this has served as a frontage sidewalk for decades. Um, only with the new addition of Zero Newtown Road, um, would we even be looking at frontage sidewalks, but, um. Basically, the applicant is asking the commission to allow for this substitution of the existing sidewalk. Under sections eight point three dash five B three, and not require the extensions of front- frontage sidewalks along the new parcel. Um, uh. Basically, the, the, the chosen grasses, shrubs, and trees will all enhance the design intent of the monument. Um, the long-term maintenance, as was mentioned, will be handled by Parks and Rec Department. Staff will be advised on best practices in terms of maintaining the, the grasses. Um. Lighting's been carefully chosen to illuminate the, the monument, and they've done a huge amount of work to look at exactly what that will look like. And basically, all that light is shielded from, uh, from view from adjacent property as well as public rights away.
I'll go it up to the commission for any questions, comments. Start with you, Hal.
Just, uh, let me do some easy ones first for the. What was the thinking? There's already some. I think a whole bunch of really substantial cedar trees. Which, if we left them alone, could be there for another five hundred years. That you're cutting down as part of this. What was the thinking there? I noticed even in the illustration, you've got there up in the top left. You show this wall, this wonderful greenery showing it on the, on the left, but I guess that's actually the greenery across the street. Because you've cut down everything else.
Well, we have, we have, we have cut down, uh, I'd say a handful of trees. If you look at the numbers, we're putting more back than we're taking down.
Yeah.
But granted, more putting back is smaller and it's new, and it's not, uh, an older mature tree. Uh, we are taking down trees that are in, some of them are in the direct way of the berm itself and, and need to go. There are a cup, one is in front of it, and we, we, you know, from in the roadside, and we, we don't want to have that blocking the view of this. Uh, monument. And then there were a couple on the backside, uh, over here, that we felt. Impeded the overall experience of the, of the monument and the, you know. For a couple of trees, it was, it was thought that this was the best scenario to go forward with, um, and by putting in. The amount of trees we're putting in, it still creates that frontage experience, uh, even though that we are removing a handful of trees.
Well, that, I, I di- I disagree. I mean, there's some. Uh, you had enormous oak, a thirty-inch oak and two or three, uh, cedars that weren't hurting anything. They're out of the berm, they're out of the way.
And, and we are leaving, like, there's one right here, that's.
There's one you're leaving, but I, I get that.
While we're leaving on the other end, and we're trying, we are somewhat sensitive.
Well, I would say that, except that now we'll end up with. Two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve new smaller trees. And I looked it up with a twenty-five-year lifespan, so they never really get very large, and so we're really. They're really beautiful trees. I get that. If they arrive five years old, they're gonna last for twenty years instead of five hundred, so. Where you have a, a little issue here is with the tree selection, and so I understand the idea of having this beautiful thing that's uplift from the bottom. I think these are probably the wrong trees for here, and it would make sense to do something that's. Longer-lived. Maybe it's a little less beautiful, but at least longer-lived. And, and, and possibly a little larger, but I, I, there's no way I can see getting rid of some of the. As, as soon as you get away from the sail areas, where you've got two or three of those, uh, cedars. That aren't hurting anything, and the idea of that making it the, a, a stark display, instead of being part of the landscape.
Yep.
I'd vote for part of the landscape. In fact, your, your images show it. The top one makes a big deal of it looking like it's part of a landscape. That's what makes it so nice and green and beautiful, and it's not gonna look like that.
It will look like this.
Oh, well, because of the greenery across the street. Okay.
But that's, that's a legitimate photo from the site taking that look.
And with the trees on the right at their absolute tallest before they start to die. Because that's them at twenty-five years old.
I, I would, I'll beg to argue with the trees, because we have one of these planted in my front office. It's been there for more than twenty years, and it's thriving great right now.
Okay, I, I looked that one up, and everybody seemed to agree on twenty-five years. I've never seen that kind of an agreement, so once they all agree. You might have a great one. Let's plant that one, but.
But we, but we, it's a tree we do use quite frequently. But we, but we, it's a tree we do use quite frequently. But I, but I, if the technical item wants to be that we work with staff to make sure we ensure that that.
Don't have to replant the trees every twenty years would be a good thing.
Fine.
Um, and, and I'm just, I'll see what the rest think. I, I don't see. Just eliminating. Like it's two or three cedars that are on the, and, and an oak that are off the burn there.
Well, there is.
Not hurting anything, off, off on the left, the, the south side. Look at L four point O.
Yep. So the problem we have with these trees right here, cause those would be the trees that we would normally try to leave, right? You have the oak and that cedar and these are really quite junky little trees.
Those are trouble.
Yeah. Uh, but that's, that's again, we're creating this berm. That's where the drain is to be able to tie into the drainage and that's our, our low point. So the grading that we're doing in that root zone. Will probably do enough damage that that tree's not gonna survive. So that was the justification for these trees on this side being removed. Now, the two trees down here, a- again, this one maybe could stay, but we have, we have a monument wall going right along here with a footing. Right? So we're, we're three feet away from that trunk of that tree. And we're digging down thirty-six inches for concrete footing. Half of the root zone is gonna be gone. Uh, and basically this one is the same scenario where we have that, you know, a wall. With a foundation right next to it. You, you know, it's a, it's a healthy tree. It doesn't look terrible by any stretch, but you know. The impact to that root zone is, is gonna be significant by the time we're done with construction. So that was our rationale. It wasn't that. We wanted a complete clean slate with no trees left around. Um, you know, the only tree we took out really from an aesthetic perspective was this one. Cause it'd be right in front of everything. We did leave this one because it's outside of all of our areas of impact. Um, you know, these, these are all.
Those are all in the burn.
Getting affected. Yeah. So that, that was the.
I would think that if, if laying a drain is the only thing that's stopping you from saving a tree, I would say find some better way to connect up the drain. I don't wanna lose an old tree just because we didn't think about where.
Okay. So, so I mean, I, I would say if that, if that thirty inch oak is, uh, this cedar to me would be the one that would have to go. If we wanted to try to save the oak, if that was.
Pick one. With regard to the, the connection to the, the. The sidewalk, starting from the left-hand side. And you said, yeah, you want to encourage people to be able to walk in. But it disencourages them to it. The way, you left it in place that it certainly turns up and it goes to the library. Cause, uh, lion's share of people using that sidewalk are headed for the library. And if they're not, maybe they're headed for the senior center because that's where other things happen. In which case they have to head to the library route and then make a hundred and eighty degree to go back into this thing.
Right.
Do you have to? Couldn't there be a little shortcut into where the, the, uh, the rudder is? So it connects better. So people are encouraged to just walk that way. It is, once they go and buy it, they're not gonna walk in.
So what I would say is we could do a connection right through this little spot right here, if that was a desire. If you think there's enough pedestrian traffic that's traveling. North or south along there, that wants to justify coming through here, we could do that. I would not come into this again. This, this is designed to be an enclosed space. That's access from two direct points. Um, if you wanted to have a little sidewalk right there.
I would say connect the, the more, more transparent it is, because, uh, right now, so much of it is, is crossing that, that. That line between is this a monument or is this a museum? The museum you go into and you come out on through the doors.
Yeah.
And so what we're looking for is a monument and we get into a museum. So the more transparent you can make it. The more just a monument it would be. So I would say if you can, just connect it onto the side there. Maybe open it on the other side so it looks like it goes through or.
Well, we, uh, so I mean, you, you hit an interesting point there. We really do want to control the experience, right? That the whole idea of this is to really control where people enter, how they experience it and how they flow through, which is why we have. Walled everything in to control that use the experience. Uh, and that's why I wouldn't want to break through anywhere else. But that one spot, that could be fun.
Well, I'd say, yeah.
Yeah. But, but there, there was a lot of intent as to where we expect people to really enter, how to, how they progress through. How the interpretive signage will tell the stories as they go through that, because it is, to some degree, yes, it is a monument. But it is a, a museum on some level too. It is telling a story, uh, as you go through it.
Now, I'm taking it this, this story that tells is different than the story of the submarine museum.
Hundred percent.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, will, will there be overlapped? Absolutely. But, uh, you know, this is really. That is a celebration of the submarine. History of the, of the submarine base, basically, and the submarine operations. This is designed, you know, construction, a lot of E D. Uh, component, then it is the operation, which is subforce, but then it goes also back to Garotten and the. The families that are here, right? And the fact that what, what the subbase and the sub industry means to Groton. How different Groton would be if those two things didn't exist in our kind of.
Hoorah.
Says a guy who's not in.
So have the displays? I mean, that's, that's a total of a hundred and fifty feet on a side. So it's three hundred feet of displays you've got there. Do you already know what they are?
Not yet.
That's a lot of display. That's a, that's a museum full of displays.
It will not be one continuous display. We have interpretive signage.
I get that. I just wonder how to keep someone entertained for a hundred and fifty feet.
Well, it, it, it depends on the person, right? There will be some stuff that is, you can walk through it in ten minutes. And you'll see some of the stuff and some of the pictures. And then you have other people. I always like to throw my uncle Jim under the bus. Cause we go to the museum with him and he would be there for hours reading every single little thing, right? So there'll be a range of information that you can spend as, as long as you want to as we go through.
I guess there's a little, I'll call it a technical, it's, it's tech, really tactical drainage item. That on the, uh, at the rudder, you put a scupper through, which I love, just scupper it out because that's the way it's going. However, at the sail end, you put a trench drain there.
We did.
At a place where the water really will get bottled up and it's relying on it to go in the trench drain. And then make it a hundred and fifty feet back to then where it turns and then makes it back again.
Yep.
Which is like a couple of different points of failure. Why didn't you just put a scupper in there as well?
Because there is a grade change between the two and because of the fact that this, this wall as a granite wall. With the core going through it, in order to make the drainage work, there's a lot, a lot more opportunities for that wall to fail. Putting a scupper through with the, the granite clad in on either side. Um, is, this is, this is gonna, in our opinion, this fares better over the long term. We do have cleanouts in there. Public Works reviewed it. We took into all their accounts. Um, we can make all the pitches work to make everything work from a invert perspective. Uh, and there really isn't a lot of water, right? Uh, this is a fifty-five foot diameter and a couple of parking spaces. Where the stormwater flowing into an area that we've, we've put in quite a few trench drains along there so that it can accommodate any storm coming through.
Well, I saw the trench drain, but it all funnels out the same way. So it's all of that water has to make it all the way out and then back to the, the parking lot. That's what started to make me think that.
Yeah, but we have.
Making a, a, a maintenance headache for, for the rest of time to make sure that state's cleaned out. They'll only know it's not cleaned out when they come back and there's five, three inches of water making a muddy mess back there.
Yep. Well, the, the worst it would, yes, if it, if it did back up, it would get to the point where it then would flow down into this walkway, which is permeable pavement. And get absorbed into the underdrain and go out.
And I think that is enough for me. It was, and, and was that something that's? I mean, your, your concept of, you know, forced into this thing and now, once, once you're in. You're have to go through a hundred and fifty feet because there's no sideways, there's no turning around, you're going. Is that something you just kind of came up with or is that something that? Came up with for throwing the board here?
Well, it's been a very long process, um, with, with not just the, but with the, the committees. Uh, over the design process of all, of iteration of a lot of different sites. Um, well, the story we wanted to tell, how we wanted to physically tell it and how we wanted to make this. There are some other monuments around the country, uh, where they've taken, you know, the sail and the rudder and placed it somewhere. Uh, and most of them just place it on a hunk of concrete. And that's kind of the end. And this, we really wanted to celebrate the USS Garotten and the fact that it, it was built here, operated here. It's named after here, um, and really create an experience and not just a piece of metal sitting in the front yard of the library.
But I don't know if you realize that, but the Washington Sail.
Yep.
When it was originally put into place by the Seabees.
Yep.
It sat on a berm that was a submarine shaped berm that made it look like it was coming out of the hillside.
Okay.
And then when they dug it all up to put in the land cap, they just forgot about all that and just.
Put it back on.
Put everything just down, put the, put everything wherever.
Right.
But memorial, memorial wall where there can't be anything.
Well, that one.
It started out something like this.
And so that was one where, again, it's an, I feel like most of us Garotten residents. Never go to the USS Washington and get out and walk around and touch it and see it and see how big it is, right? It's, it's kind of there. You only really go if you're going to the museum or you happen to be right by the front gate. Uh, this, putting it in this front and center location to really make it a landmark placemaking feature for the town. And really hopefully making a plaza all the way around it to encourage people to get out and go up and experience it. Um, is, is something that we really want to celebrate.
And if anything, that's what you talked about this and making people go into it is probably my only thing that I'm kind of critical about the design is the. The plaza area is that you surrounded it so much that separates it from the parking lot more. Instead of being a week welcoming things.
So, yes, we, we definitely enclosed it intentionally. What I would say is we left that everything facing the parking lot is down at two feet high. So it's a seat wall, right? So that it.
Only a section of it is a seat wall.
Well, everything facing, everything facing the parking lot is, is low. It doesn't start sloping up until you get into the berm over here.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yeah. And then it ramps up and, and ramps.
From the illustration, it looked like it went up both ways.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I've got.
Yeah. Mike?
Oh, just quick, uh, you are adding two handicap spots.
Correct.
Are those in addition to what's already there?
They are replacing three existing parking spaces. So there's three existing, the curb line doesn't change.
You mean parking handicap?
Handicap.
Oh, yes.
Two handicaps are being added, is that correct?
Yes.
To the whole, yeah, to the whole complex.
Is, so the library already has handicapped in that area.
They have some up close to the front door along here.
None in the middle.
Okay. And can you show me there's a electric vehicle charger?
Yes.
There?
That's right here.
Okay. So we're not messing with those.
No.
And there I, and the only reason that I'm asking all of this is that there was something in the paper a couple of months ago. There's two, there's new elect, are we taking that into consideration?
Yes. The short answer is yes.
Okay. That's all I need to know. I just don't want to see you rip everything up and then have someone else come back in and rip it up again.
We hope not.
That's it.
Gas is coming back.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
It is.
Yes.
So.
Oh, yeah. Just a quick question. Um, who's gonna actually be doing all the design for the writing of the experiences you walk through? And the histories, whatever it's going to be presented?
Yep. So there is another committee of, a subcommittee of the committee. Uh, that is in the process of coming up with all of that content. And that goes out to, um, a, a content curator, basically to do museum grade interpretive signage.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
I have nothing, but just to say that they, you also have a great website.
Oh.
That, um, tends to have a lot more information, you know, about what it could look like. And I want to encourage the commission to take a peek at.
And there's, there's donor bricks for sale there too.
Yeah.
You can have your name on a brick right down the middle of the line. Great video.
A million?
A million dollars?
No, what did you say?
Million bricks.
Did you, did you give a count on the bricks or the job?
Anticipated in two thousand.
So, um, one observation, not a judgment, is I really liked slide twenty-six. Because so many projects that we have don't have great visualizations or three D visualizations, right? And you see it at least here. And, uh, there's particular buildings in downtown Mystic, which I thought were missed because you did not have that. So I really like that. I also think regarding the USS Washington, just want to substantiate that is we don't go see that, right? You may go to the Nautilus, but that is almost like a lost memorial. So I like the concept of the experience that you're trying to get inside. And while I agree with what Hal said in many ways, that sidewalk cut through, I think maybe takes away from that experience as well. I don't see a whole lot of people walking on one seventeen there would potentially go into this. So I think it's, I know understanding is a technical item, but if, if the goal was to have the immersive experience, let's go with it. Let's embrace it. Um, and that's all I have.
Thank you.
Well, I just follow up with a.
Yeah.
The immersion, because I think there's two little experiences. One is the submarine experience.
Yeah.
The appendage that goes off into the library is kind of a different little aspect, right?
Well, we're trying to tell a story the whole way through, right? And that is what we really like about is you get to the end, we can, you know, we talk about designing, construction, we talk about operation, we talk about families. And then we talk about the connection to Garotten as it's going right to the front door of the library, which we think is a very telling story.
I, I, I suppose it's just always a good break because that is a different.
It's, it is.
It's a different thing.
Yeah.
Just had one item. Do you have any security cameras for this?
Uh, we don't have any security cameras as this and we can talk to the library and the, and Thrive fifty-five to see what they have. And if there's any that they want to adjust in this location.
Well, it might be a good idea. Especially because it's right on a highway there. A lot of people will, will drive.
Couple of kids with a spray can. Yeah. There you can climb the hills, right? Behind the six foot wall.
And you don't put the boat number on the sail?
Well, that's, I think that probably will go on, the boat number.
No, I'm just curious. Even though they don't show them anymore, but people might not want to see what, what the hull number is.
I was gonna say.
Yeah.
I'd like to see it. I know they don't have it going up the river for.
Well, they took a lot, yeah. Remember they had to take, grind all the.
Yeah.
The numbers off the sail.
Well, there's one, one extra thing that it kind of snuck in here just because it's just a note. About, says USS Garotten on the side there and it's very nice and raised letters, backlit. That I wonder about. Uh, I don't know if I'm favor. We don't have that many backlit monuments out there with the signs, so. It's wonderful to see, to put, shine lights on it, whatnot, but have backlit letters on the side there. That I would not be in favor of. That's nothing, nothing to do with anything else we have in town.
Well, we were, we were, in all honesty, we're not even sure if the sign's gonna go in, right? There's been some discussion if it's even warranted to have a sign, but we wanted to have it in here so the square footage is there.
Okay.
Uh, didn't feel like it was appropriate to shine a light on that wall and create a high point of light. In front of what we're really trying to light, which is right behind it. Um, and so the backlit seemed like the, the least obstructive way, just like, just the letters that, that would be put up there.
I, I think just having the raised letters with enough street light and you'll be able to see it clearly.
That's true. I mean.
Backlit, I'd make, it kind of like diminishes it, it turns into a. Competes with gas stations, you know, it's just a different, different level of stuff.
Okay.
Does anyone have anything else?
Nope.
And does anyone have concerns with the motion? So I'll make a motion then to approve the site plan application, S I T twenty-four zero 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 two, USS Garotten Sail. Zero fifty-two Newtown Road to construct the USS S Garotten Monument with the following conditions. One, the applicant consult with the fire marshal on the timing of the temporary closure of the. Fire lane during construction of the new raised crosswalk. Two, any modification to this plan imposed by another federal, state or local agency shall require. Additional review by town staff or the commission, whichever is appropriate. Three technical items as raised by staff shall be addressed. Findings, the commission finds that a frontage sidewalk along the Zero Newtown Road parcel does not exist. The existing internal sidewalk in between zero and fifty-two Newtown Road has functioned as a. Frontage sidewalk since the library and senior center have been built and may be substituted for the required frontage sidewalk. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second and any discussion on the motion? So we'll vote on the, uh, motion for the, uh, Garotten Sail. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any distinctions? Motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you all, thank you.
Brochures?
You gotta, free to.
You gotta have free breaks.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Oh, the paving. Hey, Jim. How you doing? Still uh up in Vermont a lot or? No? It's like spring up there, huh? Until re- until this week, they got.
My neighbor called me two days ago, they had forty years.
Yeah, Colington, so they got forty in, forty-two inches in the last seven days.
Another chance to go.
This is a reverse, but right.
Peter Roper's not here.
What? Who, Peter? Why?
No new business after ten o'clock.
Oh. This isn't as bad as sometimes. I figured it would call my time. Okay, moving on. New applications, do we have any?
Just the one that's listed.
And that's one, and that's the one on that the person spoke to us tonight. So. Referrals, we have non-commission reports reported there, I have nothing. And report a commission, does anyone have any?
The real short one, that goes towards parking in downtown Mystic. And then apparently, it's, it's, it's an okay thing, is that. I I just started to serve on a. Parking lot committee board for the, for the Baptist church down there, which turns out to be more for the paving than anything else, but. It came up about the idea of charging for. For parking using the app. That. I forget what the name of that thing is that everybody's using. And they're not using it, neither are this, some of the other churches because. I I thought, well, it should be perfect because you can just have exclusions and do whatever it was. There's no mechanism right now within the app. To do anything special. Like allow. The members of the church. To be excluded from having.
Like with a pin, to get a pin or something.
Or anything else, right now there's nothing.
Can't get a parking pass?
No, that's, that's, that's not, the act just doesn't allow for you parking there, you pay.
No, I just.
So, which is crazy. Yep, because everyone should be using this thing, and instead they can't because no one has an answer to how to use it.
So what, do you want us to write an app?
That would. Find one, but that's the issue, is that because apparently we've got the churches and apparently, oh, the the Argea rents. Regularly spaces from the church. They they pay them thousands.
Oh, do they?
So they actually have a, have a contract with them, which I didn't know anybody did, but they're already doing it. That's, well, why are you using the app? And they said, well, we don't know how.
How does a church know that it's an Argea Parker?
They don't.
Oh, they don't?
They don't. Argea just gives them a check and says, please.
Oh, they probably direct them, okay.
And they've got enough, except when it gets crowded and then there isn't any space.
Well, then they could, Argea could. Essentially pay the fee that's on the app. And do the same thing without. If that app could work.
Well, it could. Right now, they're just, they're just.
Yeah.
Good arrangement that they're having just. But uh. They're, so they're trying, but there's just no mechanism to allow them to do it, right?
Someone's.
Which is a fair. The app should allow for something.
Someone's listening.
Well, the app exists, all we just need to tweak it.
Yeah. But they never. Anything else?
Well, just if we could get the planting thing. Um done.
So we have, I think, planners starting at the end of April, we're, we're fairly swamped just for two months, but yeah, that is absolutely.
Okay. It drives me crazy seeing these species.
Yeah. We've got the daycare. Childcare stuff, straight.
Great, no, I appreciate that, thank you.
Yep.
Reporters, staff.
Two things. To remind you, community compensation on Thursday, uh which they give the future of Garton, essentially it's keyed toward the P O C D. In it, it's uh that marine science magnet school.
Swear?
Marine science. Um, good food, right?
Make sure not to.
Exactly, um, this one's coming in hard for, so. Um, secondly, the the correspondence you got that we went under public communication. So we've gotten a lot of of similar um correspondence, not necessarily directed to you. But I think is a result of um some presentations at the March twelfth committee of the whole meeting.
Yeah.
Where uh the housing authority gave an update on what their work was, um the. Town council wanted to talk about. You know, mobile homes, maybe we should ask the planning and zoning commission to um develop regulations for mobile homes. Um, something that was recommended in the affordable housing plan along with. Recommending that. For open space subdivisions, right now you have to have a minimum of twenty acres before you can take advantage of the open space subdivision regulation. Maybe that gets reduced down to ten and cer- or five in certain areas. People listening to it.
Hmm.
Mixed all those things together and 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 resulted in and comments like that. Housing authority just offhanded comments said, oh, and we might be interested in Butler because maybe we could do something. And so it, so people have just mashed them all together, there's gonna be mobile home parks at Butler.